We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on May 18, 2021 to order at 2:02 PM. We'll now have a moment of silence, but before that, I'd like to share that this month, Waco has lost some very influential leaders. And I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory of three of these influential leaders: Former mayors Malcolm Duncan Senior, Mayor Lynda Etheridge, as well as former Waco ISD Superintendent Marcus Nelson. And I'm going to start and share some history of these important community leaders. Malcolm Perry Duncan Senior passed away on May 4th, leaving an amazing legacy of a successful businessman, philanthropist, and devoted civic leader who always spoke his mind. His community involvement included 15 years of elected service on the Waco ISD School Board in the 1970s and 1990s, and on the Waco City Council from 1981 to 1986, serving as mayor in 1984. He and his wife Ruth gave millions to local education and health initiatives, including the funding and building of the South Waco Library in 2006, and contributing to the construction of the South Waco Family Medicine Clinic. His proudest accomplishment was the Matt Grant Scholarship Fund that he created with the Waco Foundation in 1995 to ensure that every local student had the opportunity to earn a college degree regardless of their financial circumstances. The Malcolm and Mary Ruth Duncan Mac College Program has awarded more than $8.2 million in Mac scholarships and secured nearly $55 million in federal aid for high-achieving, low-income students in McLennan County. Mayor Duncan served on the Waco ISD School Board during the desegregation of Waco ISD schools, worked to improve educational standards, and invest in neighborhoods and schools. He is part of the city leadership that began the revitalization of downtown Waco. Mayor Lynda Etheridge passed away on Saturday, May 8. Mayor Etheridge was active member of the Waco community and served on the Waco ISD School Board from 1984 to 1990, and was a Waco City Council member from 1993 to 2000, and was Waco's first woman elected as an at-large mayor. As mayor, she was instrumental in making improvements to Waco's water supply, specifically raising Lake Waco, and battled to protect the city's water supply and stop the closing of the Waco's Veteran Affairs Hospital. She is remembered as smart, tenacious, and as a gracious leader. And finally, former Waco ISD Superintendent Marcus Nelson passed away on May 15. Marcus Nelson's been a career being a strong advocate for students and teachers and wanted to make a difference in the community. He loved children and was committed to providing quality education to every child. He understood it took a community to transform a student's life and cared deeply about the team he assembled to join him in that cause. Dr. Nelson served as the Waco ISD Superintendent from 2017 to 2019 and was instrumental in the formation of Waco ISD's in-district charter Transformation Waco. So now, please join me in a moment of silence in remembering the families and friends of Thank you. As part of the first phase of the City of Waco reopening process, the City Council is now meeting in person along with limited city staff and following CDC guidance and taking safety precautions. Public participation will remain virtual at this time. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic on March 16, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to its state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. While providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person and is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The meeting is being recorded and the video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item are asked to register with the City Secretary's Office by noon today. Individuals who register to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from our City Manager Bradley Ford.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Welcome into the room. We have no changes to the agenda today, and so I'll move quickly into my council report. We do have two informal reports on the agenda today. The first is an update on COVID-19. It's informal report 277. We remain on track in terms of COVID hospitalizations as well as our incidence rate, and given any unforeseen changes to COVID statistics or variants, this will be our last informal report on this, on COVID-19. Second IR is 278.
City Manager Ford, I'm sorry, before you go on to the second IR, I did want to say, you know, first of all, thank you to staff and the Health District for providing these reports, especially during the time that we saw the increased and rise of COVID-19 in our community. I am proud to say that as I look at the percentages of people that the Health District has vaccinated, especially when it comes to people of color, we are ahead of the county, in some cases the county, the state, and even nationally of those percentages. And so, all that is going on here in our backyard with the Health District, so I want to say kudos to the staff there, the management, the team. And even as we move forward, and even though for right now, we won't have these reports, and as more guidelines are being brought down by the CDC, I'd look to... It is encouraging to see that our numbers keep going down and dwindling, so I just want to say kudos to the staff for this.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. One thing that you said reminded me that if people are watching those numbers today and watching our meeting, certainly they'll still be available on covidwaco.com on a daily basis. So if you've been enjoying seeing those statistics, that's the format and location that they'll be remaining. Our second IR today is our second quarter financial update. This is actually the first report that's been completed by our new Director of Office and Management and Budget. Nick Sarpy completed this report, and you saw some changes to the report that I really liked and certainly was pleased to see the results as well. Revenues year-to-date in the General Fund being about a million, 1.1 million ahead of where anticipated. Certainly, that was helped by a very strong report in sales tax that we received. And expenses similarly in the General Fund looking positive, about a million dollars less than anticipated, meaning we should be heading into the second part of this year and going in the right direction. Couple other highlights: Water revenues are running behind budget at this point in the year, about 7%. And expenses, as you might expect, are over budget, given the winter storm and the impacts of the winter storm. The other thing I'll highlight, there is a deeper in the report, some positive trends that are popping out, particularly in zoo. Through March, as noted on pages 31 and 32, our net loss per attendee has declined from $12 in fiscal year 2020 to $5.86 in 2021. So heading certainly in the right direction at the zoo at this point. We do have...
Bradley, this is Holmes. Just a couple of observations on the financial report. First of all, welcome, Mr. Sarpy. Good first report and welcome to the team. A couple of things that I would like to add is the... I know we have year-to-date annual for this year, but what we don't have is the budgeted year-to-date figures. And those would be helpful for me because like, for instance, on page 16, where you're seeing last year's annual budget, and this is for all nine major funds. Last year's annual budget, this year's year-to-date, what I would like to see is this year's budget year-to-date, so we can compare actual year-to-date to budgeted year-to-date, which I think is an important metric. And we're also looking at year-over-year, which is on there as I requested. That's great because I think your eye immediately goes to, at least mine does, to what we did last year versus what we did this year. And I think, you know, the trends are pretty good. I just would like to see budgeted through the first six months, seven months, or however often we look at this, and then how we're doing on actual to budget, on a month-to-month or quarter-to-quarter basis. That, and then, and this gets harder, and maybe after we give Nick a couple of quarters at this, coming up with like a one-page dashboard of the... And again, I like to focus on the nine that we're looking at: the General Fund, the major utilities, water, wastewater, Mars, and solid waste, and then the remedy funds, Convention, Rangers, Zoo, and Golf Course. I think those are the big ones that we're all kind of focused on. But if we get a dash, one-page dashboard on that, just with some KPIs on that, I think it would be helpful. The other, just in general, not to go into the weeds on this stuff, but sales tax trends looking good is just fantastic. I mean, that's, I think it's... Everybody, council last year had a lot of apprehension about what that would look like. Now, they were coming out of the woods pretty well on that one. I hope we can keep that up. The one metric that I thought was interesting, you kind of touched on it, particularly as we were all a little, again, apprehensive about the zoo and the Ranger Hall of Fame, this metric that I'd not seen before, the revenue per attendee, where we're seeing year-over-year grade increases just from last March to this March. 50% increase at the zoo, and I think about 20% at the... 50% at the Rangers and 20% at the zoo, which that's a nice trend to be looking at, I think an important metric. But anyway, good, good report. Numbers are all going in the right direction. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'd like to quickly jump in as well. I mean, this report is fantastic, and I really appreciate what Holmes had said about having a one-pager that has just a brief overview, I think particularly for our residents, to just have something that's a little bit more accessible. Something I'd also be interested in seeing is a breakdown of our investments of which shorts of businesses and what are their values and their practices that we're investing in as a city, so we know if those are reflective of our priorities and values as a council.
All right. Good. We'll add that to our work plan.
Goes to a great march that we received, the highest-generated sales tax of $5.4 million, so that was definitely great news to read.
Definitely.
Love seeing residents spend that stemy money in our economy.
Yeah, it's definitely happening, so hopefully it's getting out into local shops and businesses. All right. On the public hearing agenda today, we have 12 public hearings. Eleven of those will be covered by Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, during the work session, and the other is 2021-284, which is a public hearing to provide $315,000 in TIF funds to Waco Creative Art Center for their renovation on 8th Street. And that public hearing will be covered later in the business session by Economic Development Manager Kent George.
And Mayor and Council, Councilmembers, or Mayor Meek and Councilmembers Palmer and Bordey filed affidavit substantial interest on this item.
Resolutions, we have 23, and I'll just highlight a couple quickly. There's lots of great content and work in all 23 resolutions, but on Resolution 305, it approves an amended inter-local agreement for the management, maintenance, and sale of property that has been a result of tax foreclosure. And I just want to give some kudos to Interim Assistant City Manager Galen Price, who has been leading that project for us, and recently took that work to the Waco Independent School District Board for their approval last week, and earlier today to the McLennan County Commissioners Court for their approval this morning. And I also like to thank the county and school district for their continued support. It takes all three of us to work on this project, and I'm looking forward to seeing our more strategic approach to property sales rollout. Today's agenda has several grants, and I want to highlight Resolution 303, 308, and 309, which are all examples of the city accessing state funding to solve our local priorities around public health, safe routes to school, as well as safe roadways. And specifically of note on Resolution 308, I want to express my gratitude to the Public Works Team internal to the city. They designed the Waco Drive improvements in-house, so that we could use that design work as in-kind match for the grant. And that effort really allowed us to compete well for that grant based on the time constraints that we were up against. The result will be several blocks of additional sidewalks, new signal systems, controllers, and pedestrian bridge at Waco Drive over Waco Creek. Project letting is going to move very quickly on this. Later this month, work will begin. On Resolution 310, I want to highlight, it's another investment in our Better Streets Waco program with a mill and overlay happening on 4.5 miles of streets and representing about $1.1 million worth of work. Texas Materials Group is a low bidder, and you'll note that their bid was about $700,000 lower than the engineer's probable cost, which will be money that we can then reinvest into further projects in our Better Streets Waco program.
City Manager Ford, can I go back on a few resolutions? I'm sorry about this.
Sure.
303, I do want to say congratulations to the Health District. I think the $1.7 million grant, which might I add, requires no city match, would be used, or some of it will be used to really implement our mobile clinics that we have been asking for. And so, I'm grateful that we are applying for this grant. Hopefully, all things go through, but another opportunity for us to get vaccinations into arms of people that might be leery of coming to the Health District or otherwise and going to an area in their neighborhood where they feel safe. So I'm glad to see that. And then, of course, Resolution 309, that's in partnership with the State Route to School that says that Chavez and Indian Spring would be included in here of providing our children an opportunity to get to school safely. They can be around their school safely, walk to school if they have to, and without any fears or dangers of being... Their life being endangered by a vehicle. And so, I'm just, I'm grateful that this is coming to fruition as well, so thank you for highlighting those.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Both 308 and 309 feel really exciting, just the possibility of our streets becoming more walkable, having more access to sidewalks, the ADA implications. This feels like a massive public health win for students, like Mayor Protem said, as well as our families that live in the area, and walk to worship, and walk to play, and walk to work. So thrilled to see that we're taking advantage of local, state, and federal partnerships here.
And this is Holmes. Yeah, 308 and 309. Are you done, Kelly?
Go for it.
Yeah, 309. And again, I think I said this last week, as I was out on the campaign trail the last few months, sidewalks are almost as important to people as roads. And I think as we get these programs, the Waco Drive one tremendous, and then the next one at 309, also routes to school, getting kind of dedicated routes, feeder sidewalk kind of in the neighborhoods, particularly as neighborhoods connect to schools and churches. Be thoughtful, I think this council wants to be sensitive to, you know, this is demonstration of that, to the need for improved sidewalks in Waco. I wanted to also flip back to, and I know you're trying to go through these quickly, I won't, these comments won't be long, but number four, 299, the one where Cargill is taking advantage of the, of our economic, what is it, the zone, what's it called again?
The enterprise zone.
Enterprise zone, yeah. The enterprise zone, which we haven't seen a lot of activity on this, but I love seeing this. It's 125 jobs, almost $11 million in investment. The city doesn't put out any money on this. I think it's just kind of an endorsement of the project. And I worked with Cargill in a previous job, starting back in 1991, so 30 years later. The current CEO of Cargill, his first job was in Waco, and so it's fun to kind of see this come to fruition here this year on a very material expansion of the Cargill business over there. I'm going to flip to, I think everybody talked about the 303, the 1.7 million, which I think is great. It's not related to CARES directly. It's a state-level grant, if I'm not mistaken, so that's great to get the 1.7 million in there. I think, were you done Bradley? I had one more comment on...
I'm pretty close. I got one ordinance I was going to do. And then you can come back around at the end.
I'm going to come back to 310, 310, 310, which is a continuation. The other thing that I heard about is, yeah, streets and sidewalks, a big deal. But this is a street program that's in, this one happens to be in District 5, out in the Greenleaf neighborhoods and the Hillcrest neighborhoods over by the lake. So I'm excited to see, and our streets program goes all over in every district, every council district, and sooner or later, we'll get to your neighborhood. But this one, we're finally to one of the D5 neighborhoods. So we take streets improvements very seriously, so this is a, it's a material investment here, and it's a big part of our budget. But that's all I've got, Bradley.
Bradley, before you move to your ordinance, let me just, it's clear, we have a thing for streets and sidewalks right now. I just want to make sure that as we communicate and move through these projects, that the people that are affected, you know, we have some sort of communication plan to make sure that they don't wake up and their road is blocked off, or the business is inaccessible. So I know that we've been doing tremendous work to advance our communication strategies as we do build better streets and complete streets, and I just wanted to make sure that our residents know, our constituents knew that we hear you, because the same thing, you know, happens to us. And so, we want to make sure that our communication efforts are top, as top-notch as the works that are being done to plan, design, and execute these streets.
The one thing I'd add to that is specifically with regard to the Waco Drive project, as we look at this too, if there's beautification opportunities that include greenscaping or landscaping, and this is going to be the time to do that because of the nature of the work being done, I think it would be worth considering looking into that now, specifically, I don't know, like planting of trees. I don't know if that's something that would be ideal or not right now, but I think that as Waco Drive is the gateway to downtown and a primary core thoroughfare, I'm excited about the project as it exists, but it might be worth looking into to just be like, hey, is there some additional beautification opportunities that this is the time to do that?
All right. Thanks, Council for those comments. We do have one ordinance on the agenda today. It's a second reading of the standards of care for our Waco youth programs, and if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Manager, and now we will go... Are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, then the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2021-296 through 2021-318, and our City Manager Bradley Ford will now introduce the first work session.
All right. We're joined virtually by Clint Peters, who's going to give us an overview of the planning, public hearing items on the agenda today. Clint?
Good afternoon, City Council. Hope you're doing well today. We'll start, I do have 11 public hearings. Let me get to the beginning of the PowerPoint. The first one is our subdivision plats. We do have three plats for consideration today. All are recommended for approval from Plan Commission, the first one being final platting construction plans of the Lakes and University Parks Phase 4. This is the next phase of the subdivision that's in South Waco, just off University Parks, north of Loop 340. You can see the subdivision that's been, part of the subdivision that's been built out. Currently, there's a part of it, single-family, and then there's apartment complex with a lake, and this phase would be on the north side of the lake. This is the approved preliminary plat. This was approved back in the early 2000s. Originally, the subdivision was planned to be HUD code manufactured homes. That first phase of that did not develop well, so they scrapped that plan, and it had been recently redeveloping it for stick-built homes, and this would be their first phase out of that prototype of housing on the north side. They do plan, once this phase is developed out, to sell off the remainder of the property to another developer, so we do anticipate that we'll get a new revised preliminary plat for the back half of this that accesses 12th Street. But this is the Phase 4. It does include 90 lots on 33 acres with about a 16-acre common area for the existing lake. These are single-family homes in WISD, just a little under three units an acre, and there will be a sidewalk-along plats and circle that connects them around the lake. The next plat is the final plat construction plans of Deer Valley Estates Edition. This is a new subdivision in the Highway 84 corridor off Spigoville Road, just south of the Middle Bosque River. Proposed for 108 acres with 93 lots. These lots start just under about a half acre and go up to over an acre in size. You can see the layout here. See Spigoville Road, and then there's a second access point off Sunnydale Drive. And then there's a large common area for the development, about 48 acres. And then the last one is the Dean Family Edition. This is just a one-lot subdivision in the eastern portion of our city limits. And actually, this property is actually split, the city limits, half of it is inside the city limits and half of it is in the ETJ. The reason why you're seeing this one, because the water for that area is along Loop 340, so they actually have to extend the water down Elk Road to serve that lot. The home that's being built on this site is actually being built in the back portion in the ETJ, and because it is over an acre, they do qualify for septic on that portion of the lot. And as I mentioned, all three of these are recommended for approval from Plan Commission. We do have a couple of special permits. The first one, Public Hearing 286, is a special permit to extend hours of operation for retail sales in 03 zoning. 03 zoning has a limitation for retail sales from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., except with an approved special permit where you can go past 7:00 p.m. to midnight if approved. They are requesting to go at the 10:00 p.m. This property is at 1014 Valley Mills Drive. This is along the main portion of Valley Mills Drive, just east of Lake Air Drive. This portion is actually zoned 03 because it does abut a single-family neighborhood on Browning. Browning is just a short little street that runs parallel to Valley Mills, so it's very commercial in that nature, except for this little portion of residential that's adjacent to it. So the shopping center is made up of four tenants, one being a check-cashing loan place, another insurance place, and then phone repair. And then the fourth tenant, who is proposing to have the extended hours, is a tenant called Body Investments Herbal and Holistic Wellness. They are an approved Texas Hemp Registered License with the state to operate a hemp and CBD store. This does not meet the definition of a smoke shop, which is not permitted in 03 zoning, so they are just classified as a general retail store. We did mail 30 notices on this one, had two opposed and one with no comment. One of the oppositions was concerned about it being a smoke shop, and because smoke shops are not permitted in 03, even with the extended hours, if they start operating this as a smoke shop, then that would be a violation of the ordinance, even with the extended hours.
Hey Clint, can I ask you a question about this one?
Sure.
So with these four businesses all being in this one development, would this change the potential hours for all of those businesses, or just for this one, for Body Investments LLC?
So the request is just for this one space. The other three still operate under the 7:00 a.m. and the 7:00 p.m.
But would they have the opportunity to extend their hours, or they would be prohibited by statute from operating longer hours?
They would have the ability, but they would have to come through the same...
Process.
...permit process.
Yeah, that's helpful, Claire.
Clint, in regards to the neighbor that wrote in the concern, are they fully aware that a smoke shop cannot go in here under the existing 03 zoning? Do you know if that way, maybe that alleviates some of their concerns?
We did not make contact. I'm trying to see if they left the contact information, but we can definitely try to make contact with them.
I think that would be a good idea, just because they were concerned that it can be easily become a smoke shop, but if they knew that even all we're doing with this particular business is extending their hours of operation, no other change can be made. I think maybe that alleviates some of their concerns.
Correct. Well, they did not leave contact information with their notice, but we can definitely try to reach out to them, find their address, and reach out to them.
Thank you, sir.
We did put a condition on this one for this being just a one-year permit, so it will have to come back and get renewed, and we can, you know, evaluate and make sure it's not causing any issues with the, not only, you know, with the surrounding residential area, but, you know, make sure they're operating in compliance with, you know, the smoke shop ordinance and not meeting those definitions of that.
So the condition is part of the approval that's on the agenda today?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Clint, real quick, this is also, is this just across from Wendy's there, and then KFC's in the same block, and Burger King's a block down? So there's other businesses operating at that 10:00 p.m. within two city blocks on Valley Mills? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a very good point. You can see, this is looking across the street, Valley Mills towards the Wendy's, and then back towards Lake Air. And all that, all that commercial along there is zoned either C3 or C2, which does not have the hour limitations on hours.
Thank you.
Are there any other conditions that we're putting on this, this one, Clint?
So there is the one-year permit. Just, we put a condition in there about, you know, cannot meet the definition of the smoke shop. And then there are some lighting and landscaping requirements up against the residential as well. Plan Commission did recommend this by a vote of nine to one.
Is there any scenario where, if there was a series of neighborhood complaints about activities happening there, or that we would be able to revoke the special permit?
Potentially, if they're not following the conditions of their special permit, definitely so. And then, you know, when they have to come back for renewal, if there's just, you know, concern about the hours of operation, you know, being incompatible with the surrounding area, you know, that's an opportunity to, you know, express that concern. And then Council has the, you know, opportunity to not renew their special permit.
Great.
The next public hearing, 287, is another special permit. This is at 1203 and 1205 League Street in Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association. This is a special permit for a reception facility in O3 zoning district. This is an existing commercial building at the corner of League and Forest, right across the street from the H&amp;B Packing Facility. That whole stretch of League is O3 on that side. It does contain several commercial buildings and then some residential uses as well. And then you can see that the dark gray area is industrial zoning where H&amp;B Packing is. So they do want to operate a event facility for small events, such as birthday parties, baby showers, and family reunions. The building does not have a kitchen in it, and so there would be no kitchen service provided. It would just be, you know, catering would be allowed, outside catering. And then there are no alcohol sales being proposed. They will need to upgrade the site to meet the parking ordinance. You can see there what they're proposing to add for the parking. And then there's also some building code requirements that need to be addressed, especially dealing with fire protection. This is another one where we recommend just a one-year permit, you know, to see, be able to have that opportunity to revisit it, make sure it's not causing any issues in the neighborhood. We did get mail 41 notices on this one and just had one opposed. And we did get feedback from the Neighborhood Association in favor of this one. Plan Commission did recommend it by a vote of 10 to zero. This is looking down League Street, and then across the league towards the H&amp;B Packing.
The residences that are directly behind, or is that property vacant?
There are, there are some residential behind it on East Clay. Next to it is another commercial building.
They're not currently in operation, though, correct?
Correct. It's a vacant building right now. The next public hearing, 288...
I'm sorry, can I ask a few questions on this one? I wanted to make sure Councilmember Bearfield. So they are asking to be open to midnight, but there is no bar here. So I'm assuming it's BYOB?
My understanding is that they do not plan on having alcohol on site. There are no alcohol sales for sure, but it's really geared towards birthday parties, quinceañeras, baby showers, family reunions. This is in O3. So there are limitations on hours of operation for retail sales, but, you know, this is not a retail sale. But if there's a concern about the hours of operation, that can be added as a condition on the special permit.
Well, I guess that just makes me ask some more questions. I mean, if they're going to be open to midnight, and it is for weddings or quinceañeras, but it's not BYOB, how do we make sure that that is taking place?
Can I ask a clarifying question, Clint? Just because the owner's intent is to not operate it as a BYOB, they could still operate it that way, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, the city doesn't get into enforcement of BYOB. BYOB is just when they're selling alcohol.
Sure. So if it is, let's assume it is BYOB, they will have to hire their own security as well for events?
Yeah, that would be up to them. You know, I would, if there's concerns about late hours, then I think the solution would be to add a condition about hours of operation, because that would be something that the city could enforce.
I think that's something, and Councilmember Bearfield, I mean, you chime in here, but I think that's something we might want to consider.
Yeah. My concern is, is late-night in-and-out parking, because I know we have some pockets of neighborhood clubs or club houses that, at the end of an event, it's chaos and disorder because folks can't get in or out of their houses. And, you know, whether or not alcohol permits are there or not, when alcohol is present, different things happen. So I would, if, if, if the condition could be to, you know, regulate hours, then that's something that I would feel better about supporting than in its current state.
If the owner doesn't have an intent to have alcohol on the property, could we make a condition that there's not alcohol as a part of the special permit?
I don't know about that.
I'm not saying we should. I'm just throwing it as a question.
We would need to look into that.
My question along those lines is, when alcohol sales is not licensed on private property, I mean, BYOB is essentially the default or de facto rule, right? I mean, there's restaurants in town that don't have their liquor license, you know, and they're not even responsible for enforcing whether someone is of age or anything. Is it, I mean, that's, I guess that's kind of a question for the city attorney here.
Yeah. The reason I'm hesitating is because the state so strongly regulates alcohol sales.
We can barely hear you.
Sorry. The reason I'm hesitating is because the state so strongly regulates alcohol sales and has basically preempted the cities from much involvement in any kind of alcohol regulation. And so to answer your question, Councilmember Bordeau, just like our personal homes, right, we can't sell alcohol, but, you know, you can, you can serve it, you can serve it in your home. And that would be true of a lot of different entities as well.
We did get word from the applicant that 10 o'clock would be okay for their operations instead of midnight.
The owner was okay with what now?
At 10 o'clock.
Okay.
You know, having the parties end at 10 o'clock.
I think that would be, for me, more comfortable than midnight.
Yeah, absolutely. At least you know that there's some, some level of management and control that, that the neighbors, even though they're not directly involved, they're indirect, you know, there's a level of peace that I know after a certain hour, I'm good.
Yeah. A lot of our special permits for short-term rentals include, you know, I think there's prohibitions against like loud parties, or, Clint, are there other, and I'm not saying that we'll, we'll put these conditions on here, but just so we kind of know the scope or things we could do, are there other things that we can do on this permit to address any of Councilmember Bearfield's concerns with regard to parking, with regard to an atmosphere that might be frustrating to neighbors even at 9:00 p.m. on a Tuesday night, if there's a party going on there? Is, are there, are there any other things that, that we've kind of done in the past that might be helpful for us on this one?
So, so all uses are subject, whether they get a special permit or not, or, you know, permitted by rider, subject to the noise ordinances the city has. And then any, you know, any traffic or parking, you know, on-street parking or traffic ordinances that we have. So those would be in place. I mean, we could spell those specifically out as a, as a condition, but those would apply regardless of the special permit.
If there's like, you know, a month where there's a series of, you know, unruly parking, a car accident, the neighbors are complaining because, yes, it's 9:30, but it's really loud, will we be able to pull that permit and say at that point?
I think, yeah, I think if, it would be good maybe to add those specifically as a condition in the special permit, because then, you know, if they're violating those, you know, not only as a city ordinance, but a condition of the special permit, it would be something that would be, you know, easier to revoke. And so, you know, maybe what we can do between work session and the meeting is maybe come up with some additional conditions to add into what was recommended by Plan Commission, and I can read those on the record at the hearing.
That'd be great.
That would be awesome. Thank you, Clint.
Sure. All right. So the, the next public hearing, 288, is Phase Two and Three of the Garden Meadows subdivision, PUD. This is a new development off Chapel Road. Cornerstone Group on behalf of Chapel Road Holdings LLC is the applicant. This is about 16 acres of this developing tract. You can see that triangular piece there that accesses Chapel. This PUD was approved by Council back in 2019, and Phase One is being built now, and they're coming in for Phase Two and Three. And so this was the original concept plan that was approved by Council. The different phases, the purple was originally for single-family, and then this orange was a mix, could be a mix of single-family and townhouse, and then the blue was multifamily. This is Phase One that's being built currently. It's all single-family. And then Phase Two and Three, they, based on the sales in Phase One, and then just the trends in the housing market, they are proposing to go with all single-family product in Phase Two and Three. So their, their actual proposed density has gone down. In Phase Two, they were approved for nine units an acre. They do propose 31 lots, and the actual density is about a little less than four units. And then Phase Three, again, was for nine units, approved for nine units an acre. And there are about five units an acre on that. And so there's 72 proposed lots with Phase Two and Three. And like I said, it's substantially less than what was density-wise with the concept plan. You can see there are two large areas will be used for a combination of amenities and drainage. And then they'll have access points, several access points for their residents that live there. There'll be sidewalks on all the streets internally and then externally to the subdivision. These will be public streets with no gates. And then, no, there's no access to Metal Mountain. All the access will come off of Chapel. And then there's a secondary access point through an ingress egress easement through the apartments that are the flats on Chapel Apartments to provide that secondary point of access for fire protection. And then these are pictures of the site. So Plan Commission did recommend by a vote of 10 to zero to approve this with some conditions that all the PUD requirements be met, and then the plat needs to be finished as well.
Clint, remind us what the lot sizes are?
So they, these are all a little smaller than what your typical single-family lot size is. They're 50-foot width by 100 feet deep. And then they do have some reduced setbacks, but they're more of a garden home type deal. There'll be a homeowners association that will maintain the common areas, and I believe the front yards of these homes. But it is a smaller lot size than what you typically would see in the, in the single-family zoning.
Can you help me understand staffs? My understanding is, we, kind of in our green field, we like having larger lot sizes, or at least that's my recollection from our, city plan. Help me understand the justification of doing a development with lot sizes this size?
So I think a little bit of it was the uniqueness of this site. It, you know, it's kind of squeezed in there between a single-family development and some apartments. And originally, it was just going to be this front part, eight acres, and this back part, triangular piece, was not on the market until the cement plant property was sold. And so it, because of the unique shape of it, where it's located with existing land uses, what they're proposing as far as an additional amenities, having common area, having sidewalks on all the streets, some of the challenges with some of the drainage that's going to be not only improving the drainage for this subdivision, but also for Western Ridge and those large drainage areas, we felt like having the smaller lot sizes was appropriate. When you look at the overall density for the whole site, it's not much more than what's, you know, allowed in typical single-family zoning. They're just, you know, making, it's more compact, I guess, development where it is being developed.
In your expertise in, in planning, you think a development like this with small lots, like, you know, down the road years from now, is this going to be a strong neighborhood? Is it good practice to develop like this? 70 years from now in Waco, what would this neighborhood look like, you think?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, they're, I mean, you always want variety in your housing types. You don't want all of one land use. And so, you know, having a mix of that, and, you know, some of the amenities and the, and I didn't even talk about some of the design, residential design standards they put in for their homes. You know, it does provide, you know, a product that, you know, that, you know, maybe older generations can live in without having to do a lot of maintenance and yard to mow. And so, you know, I do think it provides another product that's for a growing area instead of having all single-family or apartments. And, you know, these are for-sale units individually, you know, designed to be planted in individual lots and be sold. So I do think, you know, long-term with this product and then the amenities they're adding to subdivision, it does, you know, have the ability to be, you know, multi-generation benefit to the area and the city.
Can you tell me, what are the design standards that they're planning to implement?
So they, they do have requirements for masonry in there. Let me get those to, variation of facades. It's actually a lot of the same requirements that we're proposing with our new residential design standards. They are going to have masonry, a percentage of masonry as a minimum of 70% on the first story. Like I said, sidewalks on all streets. The open space common area will be landscaped, irrigated, and maintained by HOA. They have a mix of silo garages, and where they do have front-load garages, it has to be set, the building has to be set back more, and then it can't take more than 50% of the facade.
Any additional amenities, what will they put in the green space? Just, is it just going to be green, or?
Um, it does talk about, uh, water feature to be installed, uh, walking trails, landscaping, um, let's see if there's anything else. I'm reading through their narrative. I think those are the main features they've got in their narrative.
Okay.
Clint, I have a follow-up question, kind of along similar lines. It seems like these house designs on our packet page 208 through, I think, 211, are a pretty wide range of styles and looks like space. Do we have an idea of which of these most realistically will be going into the development? Or if all of the above will be going into the development? Like, because some of these look like homes that would typically be in Woodway, and some of these homes look like homes that would typically be in the core of the city. It's just, it's just a wide range, so I'm, yeah, curious what we think these are actually going to look like.
Yeah, there, there is, there's not specific requirements for, um, you know, a certain number of these, and that, that might be a question to ask the applicant tonight, um, to see what, what they're planning on building. Uh, these are just, um, you know, different styles that they were looking at that would potentially be included.
Clint, uh, real quick, I, I was obviously not part of the council that approved the initial plan, and then I believe there was an amendment proposed that was eventually withdrawn, where part of the ingress and egress was going to be through Western Ridge, and of course, that's not part of this. But also that fire access there on Cade Way into Chapel Flats is just for fire trucks and emergency vehicles, right? That's not, uh, ingress and egress for residents.
Correct. The, the, there'll be a, a gate there, a fire access gate there, so the, the main access will be off of Chap, Chapel and to the subdivision.
And when he came with his amendment, uh, to plan, uh, which again, was, was abandoned, it, it was sounding like this was designed for, primarily for retirees, and I don't know if that is still kind of what he's, what he's articulating about his vision for this. I do appreciate that it's somewhat less dense than the initial, uh, PUD.
That, that's my understanding is, is, um, you know, for people that, you know, don't want to have to maintain a, a large yard.
Thank you.
Uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval of this by a vote of 10 to zero. Uh, we did talk about the conditions. We did, uh, uh, mail out 119 notices on this, one in favor, uh, and then we did have three with concerns. Um, and they, they, they weren't opposed, it just had concerns about drainage, traffic, uh, construction debris, and then that, um, potential access to Western Ridge, which is not included in the plan. Uh, and I, I will say that on, on PUDs, we, we have a two-step process, so you, the, the concept plan is the actual changing of the zoning, uh, where you can, you know, consider, you know, is this the appropriate densities, uh, you know, is this a, um, right land use for this property? Uh, if that's, if that's approved by council, then that, that becomes a zoning for the property. And then the, the final PUDs are, uh, come in, uh, and they're more detailed, uh, in nature, and, and really what we're approving is that they are consistent with what was approved with the zoning change on the, on the concept PUD plan. And so that's what the findings are best on, that they are consistent with what's been approved already with the zoning change. Uh, the, the next public hearing, 289, is to consider an ordinance rezoning, um, R3E to O3 on property located at, uh, 2322 and 2324 Gorman Avenue, uh, from, uh, this is from applicant, uh, Mission Waco. Uh, this is a, uh, developed property at the corner of, uh, Gorman and, uh, 24th Street in the Singerites, uh, Neighborhood Association. Uh, you can see the 25th Street corridor there, and it's about two blocks from where the, uh, new, uh, 25th Street, um, fire station is being built. Um, it's about a quarter acre. This area does have medium-density residential office flex land use, uh, and the property is currently zoned R3E. I did look up to see when that was rezoned, because it looks a little out of place. Uh, it was rezoned to that back in 1963, so a long time ago. Um, and then you can see all the purple there, uh, is O3 zoning. Um, the, uh, O3 zoning does meet the, the land use, uh, the comprehensive plan, land use plan, uh, and you do have the O3, um, zoning across the street on 24th. Uh, and, and with it being R3E, the, the change from R3 to O3, uh, doesn't make sense on this property. Uh, we did mail out the 31 notices and had zero return. Uh, this is the property, it, uh, originally was a single-family, uh, home that's been, um, divided up into, I, I believe there's either three or four units in there. Looking down Gorman Street, and then 24th Street. Uh, Plan Commission did, uh, recommend, uh, approval by a vote of 10 to zero on this one. Uh, the next one, uh, public hearing, uh, 290, uh, this is a, uh, a land use and zoning change, land use change for medium-density residential office flex, the mixed-use flex, and zone change from O3 to C2 at, uh, properties 2412, Maple and 1839, North 25th Street. Uh, this is, um, in our, uh, North Waco Neighborhood Association. It is a, uh, existing, uh, building that, uh, that was originally built as a office building, that's, it's currently vacant, uh, a couple of blocks from the St. Louis, uh, church to the north. Um, you can see, uh, there is a lot of, uh, O3 zoning along that stretch right there. Um, this is the area that's, uh, predominantly single-family along, uh, Maple. Uh, you can see the site here, here's, here's the building, and then you have homes adjacent to and across the street from it. Uh, C2 zoning, uh, not only requires that the comprehensive plan to be amended, but it does, um, allow some uses that could be, uh, incompatible with the surrounding single-family, um, neighborhood. So, uh, staff did recommend this approval, uh, and then, uh, Plan Commission by a vote of eight to two also, uh, recommended this approval of this change. Um, we did, uh, because of that vote, it does require a three-fourths vote, uh, from City Council to approve it, and we did mail out, uh, 24 notices and had zero return.
Hey Clint, sorry, did you say Planning Services recommended disapproval or approval?
Uh, staff and Plan Commission both recommended disapproval.
The reason I ask is because we have approval on our presentation, so I didn't know if that was a misprint.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. It was, it should be disapproval.
Okay.
For both of them. Sorry about that.
No worries. But I just wanted to make sure, so staff and Plan Commission both recommend disapproval.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you, sir.
And the, the next, uh, public hearing, 291, uh, this is, uh, three blocks on Clifton Street, the 400 through 700 block, uh, between Witt and Grant Street, uh, in the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association. Uh, this was one, uh, where, uh, an applicant, Sheila Brown, came to the city on, on, uh, one property at, uh, 511 Clifton, uh, and then the, the city, uh, expanded it to include the rest of those three blocks. Um, zone change from C3 and R2 to O3, it's about the four acres of property. Uh, you can see it here, here's Waco Drive out to the north and Hillsboro to the south, and then Clifton, it would be all three of these blocks between, uh, Grant and Clifton. Um, there are, uh, 15 properties that make up that area, that four acres. Uh, 10 of them are vacant, uh, four, there are four single-family residences, and then there is one vacant commercial, uh, building. The, uh, the land use plan and the comprehensive plan calls for this to be urban residential, um, but the, the properties, uh, especially the front portions of these properties are all zoned C3, which is a heavy commercial zoning district. And so, um, when the, Ms. Brown came in with application, we did, uh, work with her to, uh, delay this for a month, so we could go talk to the Neighborhood Association about potentially zoning that, all that area to O3, uh, which would bring, um, the, uh, single-family residents into conformance, uh, with the zoning district, and then, uh, you know, get some of that, that heavy commercial zoning out of that area. Uh, so we did, uh, mail 154 notices on this one, and had, uh, one returned, uh, with no comment, and the Neighborhood Association, uh, is, was in favor of this change. Uh, here, so here's the, uh, property, uh, 511, um, uh, Clifton, which was Ms. Brown's property that originally came in, and then looking down both ways, uh, on this side is looking, um, uh, from Witt, uh, single-family vacant lots, and then this is looking the other direction down, uh, Clifton from Grant Street, and you see the commercial building that's there. Uh, Plan Commission did recommend approval, uh, by a vote of 10 to zero on this one. Uh, the next one, was there a question on that? I'm sorry.
No, 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 um, no, um, I'm, I'm glad to see that it was done in this manner. Um, I think it allows the type of growth, but flex, with flexibility, that we're looking for. I mean, Clifton is, has been, is historically a commercial district, but I think some of the things that we want to see as far as availability and accessibility for both business and residents will be able to happen with, um, forward-thinking planning like this. So, um, I'm glad to see it go through this way.
Yeah, thank you. I think the O3 zoning provides that mix that could, um, you know, provide, uh, some, some positive development along there. Uh, the next, uh, case, uh, 290 is another, uh, request in Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association. This is 1101 and 1103, uh, Vine Street, uh, from James Mc, McCoy. Land use designation change from urban residential, uh, medium-density residential, uh, office flex, and the rezone from R2 to O3. Uh, this is a, a vacant lot at the corner of Vine and Garrison at Waco Drive, here, Paul Quinn Campus here. Uh, Garrison and Vine, uh, majority of single-family homes, uh, but you are just one block off of, uh, Waco Drive, which has a lot of commercial on it. Uh, land use plan is urban, uh, urban residential. Again, this area, um, you know, from Vine, uh, back towards Elm, along Garrison, is, is mostly single, or, uh, R2, which is a single-family and duplex zoning. Uh, we did mail out, uh, let's see, 38, uh, notices on this one, had, uh, one return, uh, in opposition. Uh, here's the property, uh, looking from Vine, uh, with Garrison off to the side here, and then, uh, looking down Vine, and then looking across Garrison, uh, and then looking back towards Waco Drive. Uh, the Plan Commission did recommend approval, um, of both the land use and zoning change. Um, we did get, um, uh, approval, uh, recommendation from the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association was in favor of it, uh, as well as a, a representative from, uh, Harbor Neighborhood Association, Association spoke in favor of it, uh, at the, uh, hearing. Uh, staff did, uh, recommend disapproval on this one, uh, just because of it, uh, being close to residential and it being a, um, uh, an R2 property, uh, currently going from O3. Uh, a couple of the other ones, uh, that you see on the agenda tonight are, that are requesting O3, that were zoned something differently than, than low-density residential, uh, and, and staff just felt like with the, um, commercial located along Waco Drive, that there was an adequate supply. Uh, but, but Plan Commission, uh, did, uh, recommend approval, and I, I think the main reason was there was, uh, very little opposition from the, the neighborhood and then, uh, from the surrounding area, and then also the, uh, recommendations from the two Neighborhood Associations.
Um, Clint, I, before we go on, I wanted to, to kind of, uh, address some, I know we may be working to get to the same page on this. Um, we've had many discussions about, um, low-density residence, uh, residential lots within District One especially, and how we are dedicated to keeping, you know, uh, areas and, and landmass that can be, uh, built for, for homes as they are. And I don't want to ever think, or, or for you to think, or our, our constituents to think that we're talking out of both sides of our neck, um, because what I want to, my thoughts on this property in particular is that as, you know, because I am on Garrison right off Waco Drive, I mean, you know, pass through it every day, you know, almost, and, um, it's right next to, it's right on the corner, um, of, of Vine and Garrison, and just this much from Waco Drive, right next door to what was a restaurant, at one time a convenience store, one times across the street from a mechanic's, um, facility, uh, business, you know, just down the block from Magda's Funeral Home, just down the block from Jay Heinz, just down the block from the, the Doris Miller Y at All Rappaport. Um, so I get that it is, um, in a resident, primarily residential district, but this is a major thoroughfare. And so I don't, I, I agree with the Plan Commission and disagree with staff on this particular junction, but I do understand where, you know, that staff is working to hear us in our request to maintain residential areas, cor, you know, so I want you to know that I hear you, and, and I know that you hear me, um, and hear us in this conversation. However, you know, I want to look at it from the perspective of, you know, that is a, a vacant lot that, you know, is already owned, you know, the facility would have an opportunity to continue to bring, uh, uh, small business opportunities in a place where people live and work. Um, so, you know, those are the considerations that come to me. You know, I had a conversation with some of the Neighborhood Association folks who are very supportive of this going in. You know, I asked, um, the, watching Plan Commission and asking them, and they were like, nope, we were, you know, as long as he was cool with understanding what it was, we agreed with that and move on. So I think that it's still something that wouldn't, wouldn't, um, nullify what we've been saying about, you know, keeping residential areas together. I think it, it also just provides opportunity and is, is clear indication that we walk a very fine line most of the time in how we make decisions, and the reason that we have to go through and look at each and every one of these, because every situation is different, and we can't cut and paste just because, oh, well, it meets all these criterions, we got to go through it, because that, we can't. And so, um, I am very supportive of this, this zoning change, and, um, hopefully, it'll, it'll grow and to be able to, to house and facilitate, um, workspaces for the individual of small businesses that will, um, use it as a make-ready space.
Um, this is Holmes. Thanks, Clint. Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of Mr. McCoy's, uh, change here too. I just think, I, I want to personally be careful as a councilman, because I think we'd, we'd articulated in a previous meeting our concern for changing our zoning to other zoning, and just kind of echo what you said, uh, Andrea, every case is a little bit different. So, uh, I, I don't think we can deal in absolutes on switching out of, uh, R2s, and I think this was a very compelling case to switch out, but with, with the general consciousness that we are concerned about, uh, housing and housing space, uh, in Waco, but this, this, uh, I, I just want to make sure we're not messaging to people that
Right.
That we are not going to change our, under, under any circumstance, because there are circumstances which, in which we will. And, and the other end, I don't want to, I don't want to create an impossible rubric for people to try to figure out how we're going to think on a particular
Right.
Issue. Uh, but this one, very compelling, and, uh, uh, Mr. McCoy has a good plan for this tract, and a couple of businesses moving in there, which I think, and it's very close to Waco Drive, as you said. So, uh, that's, I, I just, I'm, I'm, really, I'm challenging myself, I guess, to come up with a consistent, uh, because I like to be consistent and a little bit
Well, I think, well, I think it, as far as, I can't speak for you, but I know for me, you know, I have always said if it was something that is, you know, on a major thoroughfare, you know, with the cons, consent of, you know, the surrounding folks, um... you know, with the consent of, you know, the surrounding folks, if it's, if it's been busy, it's going to be busy. And I think that, you know, you make decisions going forward with that. I mean, now, you know, we will never be, hopefully, you know, like my former fair city of Houston with no zoning at all and anybody, anything can go anywhere. And I think that we're all incredibly intentional about how and why we do the things, but I don't think, I think that the priority of us, that housing being a priority for us has always been our messaging. However, you know, there are things that, that make the exception and I think this is just one of those exceptions.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%. Zoning is not a scientific formula where you put in a bunch of things and you just get, you know, an answer. There's a, there's a lot of actors that go into it and, you know, each case is unique. I will say, you know, we, we did work with the applicant. Originally, they, they were proposing a, a commercial zoning district that would not, you know, have the opportunity to be mixed-use and compatible with that. And, you know, working with him, we did get that request, that O3, which is potentially compatible with surrounding single-family and, and, you know, can be developed as residential if, if the commercial use doesn't, doesn't work out. So, you know, you know, and we did provide some alternate findings for the Plan Commission and, and, you know, that, that's why our process is set up that way. So you, you get a lot of input points to, to consider when you're making your decision. The, the next one is 293. This is another request, O3. The O3 zoning was popular this month. This is a request at the 6301 Sylvia Avenue. This is out in China Spring. This is actually a property that's owned by China Spring ISD to rezone from our, a portion of its R1B and a portion of it's actually industrial zoning M2 to O3. This is just right inside our city limits at the China Spring Highway and FM North River Crossing here. This, this is the new realignment of old China Spring Road at that intersection. The, the street used to go here and then Tech Stop bought a portion of this property to realign it, to make this intersection here. This property actually used to be the China Spring ISD Administration Building, which they tore down and rebuilt on Yankee Road. And so they are in the process of trying to market this property and felt like O3 would be a better property for development. So it is right on the corner of two major arterial streets. You do have some O3 zoning in the area. It does get rid of that industrial zoning, that's really not appropriate for that area. No opposition on this one out of 16 notices. It fits the land use plan and Plan Commission recommended 10 to zero on that one. And then the last two public hearings are abandonments. The, the first abandonment is by Waco Industrial Foundation. This is the, at the end of Wycon Drive, which is a cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac street off Texas Central in the industrial area. This is associated with the Embosses Group Development, Industrial Development that does the aluminum cans. They would like to pull back the street and utilities and rebuild the cul-de-sac here so they can incorporate that right away into their site for future expansion if, if needed. Let's see the, there, and there's the, the map of it. So we, Plan Commission and, and staff both recommended approval. We did have two conditions that they moved those utilities and the, at the developer's expense or provided easement and then rebuild the cul-de-sac at the, the new dead end of that street through the plating process. And then the, the last one is an abandonment of a 20-foot alley, unbuilt alley between Bridge Street and Taylor. This, another one that's in the Northeast Riverside Association, Neighborhood Association, just off of M. King between Taylor and Bridge Street, right adjacent to where the hotels are being built. This alleyway is not built, and the two adjacent property owners would like to abandon it and incorporate it into their property. So it'd be split 10 feet on one side and 10 feet on the other to the two property, adjacent property owners. You can see there's a lot of construction going on in that area and there's the hotels. And there is a, some utilities that cross that alleyway, so we will have to retain easement on that. And then there's some survey information we need for the deeds. Neighborhood Association was in favor of this one and there was no opposition to the And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Clint.
All right, Councilor.
Our next work session will be 2021-281, which is a discussion of flood study data driving changes in the floodway and floodplain along the Brazos River. This is really a follow-up on an informal report to the Council on February 16th, 2021 in providing additional foundational data. Today's presentation represents the kind of how and why portion of the discussion and we'll be back to the City Council on or before July 6th with what, with what it means regarding regulatory impacts and ways to continue to facilitate development within the Corps of Waco. This presentation will hopefully provide additional details to you and we've got the Corps of Engineers who will be describing their advanced modeling that's occurred on the Brazos and Boski watersheds and, and then we'll follow that up with kind of dialing in the localized impacts that impact the city of Waco. I'll turn it over to Jed Walker at this point to introduce the teams that are on this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Let's pull up our presentation and we will get started. So today we're talking about the, the results of the Brazos River Flood Study, which has been prepared by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers along with our consulting team that consists of Walker Partners, Friesen Nichols, and HDR. And this has been an ongoing project and study that started a little over four years ago. So why are we here? Well, today we have new hydrologic information that's been calculated by the Army Corps of Engineers and it has results that are, that show higher stormwater flow rates in the Brazos River, which in turn increases the 100-year floodplain through the city of Waco. I'm Jed Walker with Walker Partners and along with me today is Curtis Vidal of HDR and Blaine Leshlin of Friesen Nichols. And we're in the throes of completing the Stormwater Master Plan for the city, which includes updating FEMA's, or the Federal Emergency Management Agency's floodplain maps. The old hydrologic and hydraulic computer models, which predicted the, the stormwater runoff flow rates, the depths of flows within Waco streams and the Brazos River were calculated by FEMA in 1975. And then in 1986, the Brazos River hydrology was updated prior to the construction of the labyrinth where dam and also prior to the relocation of Lake Aquila. Lake Aquila Dam, you'll learn here shortly, was originally planned in a different location than where it was constructed. An important note here concerning these old studies is that they utilize old aerial topographic information that was from the 1960s era. Concurrent to our Stormwater Master Planning for the city of Waco, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has been analyzing the Brazos River basin from Lake Whitney to Lake Brazos. And this analysis includes updating the hydrologic computer models, which predict the stormwater flow rates to assist the Corps in the management of their operations of the dams at Lake Whitney, Lake Aquila, and Lake Waco. And this is all so that the Corps can optimize the flood control of the Brazos River. Our consulting team has now taken the new flow rates that were developed by the Corps of Engineers to update the 100-year floodplain maps of the Brazos River and using modern industry-standard computer software. Our presentation today will present the results of the Corps' computations of the stormwater flow rates as well as the new proposed updates to FEMA's 100-year floodplain maps. This is extremely important to the city of Waco because this new floodplain of the Brazos River may have an impact on existing properties, redevelopment of existing properties, and new developments. So with that, I'd like to introduce Brett Higginbottom with the Corps of Engineers so that he can walk you through what the Corps has done in their portion of the study. Brett?
Yes, can y'all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Yes, like, like Mr. Walker said, I'm Brett Higginbottom. I'm with the Corps of Engineers. I'm the chief of the Hydrologic and Hydraulic Studies Section here in Fort Worth. Back around 2007, Waco experienced a flood and then 2015, 2014, 2015, that was a very wet period. There was some more flooding issues. So the city of Waco, McEnany County kind of reached out to us to say, hey, you know, as Jed alluded to, the, the old FEMA products were done back in the, are published back in the late 80s and, or mid, mid to late 80s using technology and topographic maps and stuff going back into the 60s and land use products, stuff like that. So there's a lot of updates that needed to be done. So what you see here is the objectives were to produce new numerical models that were updated using new data. Use that data to analyze the overall watershed, the Brazos watershed, not just, not just below Waco or Whitney, Aquila and Waco, but we looked at the entire watershed to analyze how the flood control reservoirs reacted. So what all that data produced was a, you're, you know, it, it gave, gave kind of the foundational basis and analysis of the watershed so that city of Waco and McEnany County can establish policies and actions and make decisions based, you know, based on the results for flood risk mitigation in the future. Next slide, please. So why did we, why did, why does the Corps necessarily care about doing these updated studies? We've been analyzing storms and precipitation and rainfall, you know, since the beginning of the Corps' existence. You know, flooding, flooding takes lives, flooding takes property. What you can see here is these two charts here, I know it's a little busy, but kind of bear with me. If you look at the period from, say, 1904 to 2009, the red diamonds on that chart are actual events that happened that are recorded. So there are 24-hour rainfall totals over a 10-square-mile drainage basin. The gray band in there, that's the big, the light gray band, if y'all can see a light gray band, that is kind of an average state of Texas 100-year 24-hour rainfall event that we utilize whenever you do studies. That, that's what, that's the event that you use for the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program 100-year flows or to produce those flows. The dark gray band, that is for Waco, then, then the area, it varies north to south within the state. It's around 9.8 inches. So as you can see, there's been a lot of events that happened up through 2009. Now, if you'll look at the blue X's, the blue X's were from 2010 to 2020. All those blue X's, those are actually events that have happened in the state of Texas that exceeded what the 100-year rainfall total or the 100-year 24-hour total is for the city of Waco. The bottom slide, that's a change over time, right? So if you go back into the, say, the 1930s, there was a really wet period. And then, and then we went through kind of a dry period and kind of, then you go through your periods of drought, you know, the, you know, big droughts. And now if you look at, you know, the 2010 era, 2010 to 2020, there's all those blue X's that have occurred. So we don't like to, we've kind of gotten out of the routine of calling it climate change, we call it climate variability, because you can see what happens. It was dry, then it was a really wet period in the 30s and then it was a drier period and then it was a really wet period again. So that's what we're experiencing and it's, you know, and that's just what happens and that, that's what kind of drives the Corps to do these studies and to continuously update things. So next slide, please. So I want you to keep an eye on the city of Waco emblem there. Y'all know where you're located at. Just for reference, from 2015 to present, there's been $150 billion damages due to flooding. Just from 2015 to 2017, in that two, well, two, two and a half year period, really kind of whenever they started, when they ended, 160 fatalities. Now be that slipwater rescues or whatever may happen. So to say that, you know, 100-year event only happens once a year, or once every 100 years, that's, we're trying to get away from that terminology, but if you'll click to the next slide, you'll see what I mean. Just, this is 10 years worth of storms that have happened in the state of Texas. So you can kind of see how the dark red, which is the heaviest precipitation, kind of dodged the city of Waco, right? We will actually, I'll slightly show you a couple of slides here in a little bit where we have the ability to transpose storms and we actually move some that happened really close over Waco just to see what would happen. Go to the next slide, please. So like I mentioned earlier, 2007, the Brazos River experienced 39,900 CFS. CFS is cubic feet per second. So basically if you said, you know, basically, it's kind of like saying a basketball, so 39,900 basketballs going by you, you know, every second. That was due to almost 14 inches of rain that, that occurred in the watershed. Fast forward to 2015, we were coming out of a drought all the way up through 2014. It was really, you know, really, really dry, but 15, between 15 and 18 inches fell on the Brazos Basin. That used up, you know, 34 to 55% of the flood pool capacity of the three flood control reservoirs in the basin. And the Brazos River experienced the flow of 30,800 cubic feet per second. In addition to that, there was also some debris accumulation that occurred, you know, and got stuck in the labyrinth where. So those, those, that heavy rain using up the flood, the flood storage capacity in the reservoirs and then the debris flow or the debris accumulation in the labyrinth where caused a few issues with some localized flooding. Next slide, please. So there's four things that go into flood study typically. How much rain, that's meteorology. How much runoff comes from that rain, that's the hydrology piece of it. How deep is it going to get, that's the hydraulic piece. And then what happens because of that? The regulatory products that, that are used typically in conjunction with ordinances and everything for that, for that protection are, you know, typically go along with the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP products, which are, you know, our 100-year flood, floodplain, the 100-year flooding, flood insurance rate maps. But outside of that, the non-regulatory products are kind of the what-if scenarios, right? What if one of those big events happened over the city of Waco or happened over the Brazos watershed? How much runoff is going to occur from that? How deep is that going to be? What's, what's the inundation impacts to that? What neighborhoods, what streets are going to get flooded? And that kind of allows the city and county to, A, kind of adjust ordinances, possibly adjust ordinances or be a little bit more, I don't want to say strict, but be a little bit more forward-thinking as into, if, if this was to happen, do we have enough protection to survive that? Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, those, you know, everybody knows you've got Whitney, Waco, and Aquila. All three of those were constructed as flood control reservoirs. They also have other uses, water supply, recreation, but the number one reason for them is flood control. If you click the next slide, you'll see that the purple that you see on that map, that is what we consider the regulated area. That is the portion of the watershed, the Brazos River watershed that is regulated, that's regulated by the flood control reservoirs. If you click again, you'll see the green, that's the unregulated area. That is below the dam. So the area below Aquila, Whitney, and Lake Waco, that incorporates, but, you know, the bulk of the city of, city of Waco's local drainage. That's what we consider the unregulated area. So 82% of the basin at So, 82% of the basin, at basically the Brazos River gauge, 82% of the basin is regulated by these flood control reservoirs. So that only leaves 18% unregulated. Next slide, please. So, how do those three dams operate? If this is a chart, or this is, this shows what the annual peak discharges in the Brazos River were, starting back at, you know, basically 1900, whenever there were records. If you click real quick, you can see, click the next, there you go. So, pre-dam, the routine flood level, you can see it got up 140, 150,000. That was routine. And then Lake Whitney came in, you can see how those annual peaks decreased. Lake Whitney took up, it's absorbing a lot of that runoff. And then Waco came in, and then Aquila came in, and you can see, since Waco, since all three of them were in place, routine flood levels, you know, with the exception of an occasional outlier, but for the most, for the most part, most of them are less than 50,000. Big difference between 150,000 and 50,000. And that's predominantly due to 80% of the basin being regulated. In order to predict that in the future, you've gotta use some kind of numerical modeling to come up with those numbers. And that's, that's what we did for this study. Next slide, please. So, we've already heard that the flows increased, and so why? Mr. Walker kind of alluded to state-of-the-art numerical modeling. The original study used larger sub-basins inside the watershed. It utilized, as he had mentioned, you know, older aerial topography. What we did was, we broke the drainage basin down into a lot finer detail, we used a lot, a lot finer detail, updated LiDAR, which is kind of a radar topography data. We, you know, nowadays, your land use data has completely changed. What used to be, you know, either an aerial photo, and you did an estimate, nowadays it's all digital. You can go in there and pull up, you can pick out how many, you know, the percentage of rooftops that are inside of a basin, pretty simple nowadays. Soils have changed, it hasn't changed, you know, land use hasn't changed substantially, but localized land use has changed. But even out in the watershed, you think about, you know, every one to two to five-acre ranchette that gets sold, and they go in there and they kinda clear out the trees, and they plant coastal, you know, Bermuda grass or something. All you're really doing is increasing flows, because now you don't have the epaule transpiration and the transpiration features that you used to have in the watershed, and now you're all, so now basically more of that water, that more of that rainfall is making it to the ground, which is making it into the river. Also, as Mr. Walker alluded to, Lake Aquila originally was planned to be below the confluence of Cobb Creek. It got built upstream of the confluence of Cobb Creek. I can't answer why, that was well before my time, but what that ended up doing was adding 37 square meat, 37 square miles additional drainage area that comes in below Aquila, and that wasn't accounted for in the original 1986 flood insurance study discharges. So we put together a model, and then we actually took an event, you know, took events that happened in the basin, put that rainfall data into the model, and ran it, and then what we do is we calibrate the model to that observed event. So the chart you see at the bottom below the map, that is an actual hydrograph that shows how the computed from the model, how close it is to the actual observed gauge data within the model. So our, so when we see that kind of result, which that's, that's a lot better than what we normally get on our calibration, but when we see that, see that kind of result, we have a really good, you know, it's a really good foundation for how, for showing us how the model, or how the basin, how the model is reacting to real-world conditions. Next slide, please. So, what happened whenever we did all this? The original, the 1986 flood insurance study 100-year flow for the Brazos, and I'm just gonna reference at the Waco gauge, at the State Highway 6 Waco gauge, it was 84,100 CFS. That's what it's been since 1986, since that flood insurance study got published. So everything that was being built, or developed, or planned along the Brazos, it was using the 81,000, or 84,100 cubic feet per second discharge as its design discharge, or as the basis for the 100-year, the 100-year design. This study resulted in 101,000 at the Waco gauge. You know, roughly 20% increase, but, you know, like I, like I said, it's due to a little bit of land use change, updated modeling, and, you know, one of the big, like I said, the big driver was Aquila being located, or built in a different location. Next slide, please. So how does this relate to water surface elevation? We took those numbers and took an existing hydraulic model of the Brazos that we had, you know, that we had, and we took those numbers into it to see how that differentiated between the flood insurance study elevations and the results of this. And as you can see, if you get down by the Lake Brazos Dam, it's about 1.7 feet, you know, as you go, you know, through the rest of it, you get up to roughly 4.2 feet difference. Freezing Nichols, they did a more detailed study, and their numbers are not as, not as high as what we came up with, but, you know, it does, it just shows kind of the effect of how these change in, change in discharges, or change in flows on the Brazos can end up being, you know, resulting in higher, higher flood inundation depths. Next slide, please. So I remember we talked, we've had that scary, that was, what's, that slide we had earlier that showed all the storms in the state. Way inside my office, we called up the scary storm slide, just because it doesn't really matter where you're at in Texas unless you're up in Amarillo, you're gonna get surrounded by those storms that have happened in the last 10 years. So, if y'all remember back 2015, Tropical Storm Patricia, we call it the Dawson Storm, because it moved through and it just kinda paused at, around the community of Dawson, which is Navarro Mills Dam, on, you know, that's another one of our flood control dams. But in 24 hours, the rainfall, it dropped 22 inches of rain. If you remember that slide I showed earlier, that I said, Waco's 100-year design rainfall is about 9.8 inches, so 22 inches. What would happen if that would've happened over Waco? Next slide. So, that's pretty scary to see that 22 inches be over the City of Waco, right? This isn't the exact location where we moved it whenever we did our analysis, we actually moved it farther up into the watershed, so that the lakes would absorb a bunch of it. Go to the next slide, please. This next one is 2016, the Brenham Storm. That was 90 miles south of Waco, so we moved it 90 miles north, and go ahead and hit the next, the next slide button. But that was a 17-inch rainfall total in 24 hours. So, 30 miles for one, 90 miles for the other, right? Kinda dodging the bullet, because, you know, the Dawson Storm went right over Waco, it just didn't pause there. It could've, it could've paused and stopped at Waco. Go to the next slide. So, what we did was, like I said, we didn't center it over the City of Waco, we sent, and we didn't even really center it, we just moved it, just kinda randomly see where, what would happen if we just moved it into the basin. And we wanted the lakes to absorb the bulk of it, so that we could see how the lakes, the flood control lakes, Whitney, Aquila, and Waco, how they reacted, and how they, not really controlled, but how they mitigated those flows. So, this is kind of a busy slide, but just kinda bear with me. What, what happens in the Brazos, whenever you have a big storm like this happen, is you essentially see two peaks, right? So, the green that you see there, where's the unregulated area, that's what, that's what happens below the lakes, within the City of Waco, all that runs into the Brazos. And I don't have a scale on the left or the right side to show what these numbers, the numbers would be, but just know that you're gonna get a higher flow, within about a day, you're gonna get a higher flow within the Brazos. Within about three days, you're gonna, we're gonna start, well, if it stops raining, we have, we have rules or regulations that we have to follow before we can make releases. But within about three days, we're gonna start opening gates to try to get that flood control, that floodwater out, because the whole purpose of these lakes is to absorb that excess flow until we can safely release it. But we wanna get it out as fast as we can, so we can be ready for the next, the next storm event. So about three days later, let's say we're gonna start, slowly start opening, opening gates up, and then about six days, you're gonna kinda see a peak of our releases that we're gonna make. Now, when a big storm hits, and it fills up and all that, sometimes the lakes go into what we call surcharge. And what that is, is, in the, say for Aquila, it has a, a unregulated spillway. So if it gets up to that spillway, that emergency spillway elevation, it's gonna spill over that spillway, we have no control. For Waco and for Whitney, they're a Tannegate project, so we go into what we call surcharge operation. The lake gets high enough that there's a chance that it can either damage, either damage the gates by going over the gates, or any kind of adverse impact to the dam, then we're gonna start opening those gates, regardless of what the flow is in the Brazos. For dam safety, we have to open those gates. So if it goes into surcharge, you're gonna see a much higher, you would see a much higher peak in the Brazos itself. Go ahead and hit the next slide button. So you can see the yellow line, how it peaked way up. So instead of being that slow, that small, slow, regulated release that we use, that we would have coming out the gate, we would go into surcharge operations, and we would have to make extreme releases, just for the safety of the dams, and for the safety of the outlet structures. Next slide. So when we transpose those dams, what they, what ended up happening was primarily Waco went into, Lake Waco went into surcharge operations. Lake Whitney's got huge, huge amount of flood storage capacity. Aquila was far enough kinda to the northeast, that the, that the transposing those storms didn't impact it as much, but Lake Waco really took a hit. And what ended up happening, was you can see on the Dawson Storm, let's say that we had a three-day, or say we had a three-day warning to start doing something that we almost never do, but if in extreme cases, sometimes we will actually start making releases ahead of time, so that we can lower the flood pool, or lower the conservation pool, so we have extra flood storage. Well, when we do that, say we had three days to do that, we still saw a peak in the Brazos River at the, at the gauge of 190,000 cubic feet per second. Remember, the new, or the recommended FEMA 100-year flow is 101,000. So 190,000, if that Dawson Storm would've been 30 miles different. The Brenham Storm, with a three-day warning to release floodwater, or release water beforehand, still 181,000 CFS on it. Just for reference, the New Braunspieck Storm, which was slightly, the rainfall amount was, I think it was 13 inches in 24 hours down in New Braunspieck in 1998, that produced 114,000 CFS when we moved that one over. We were trying to find a storm that was close to an actual 100-year event. So, we felt pretty good about the 101,000 CFS, or cubic feet per second, that we estimated with our numerical modeling. Next storm, please. Or the next slide. So what came out of this? We produced two volumes. One was the, just an overview of the 100-year, the updated 100-year flow from the hydrology study, and what we did just on our, our kinda very basic flood inundation mapping with those deals. And then volume two was an actual, the storm shifting and kind of the dam operation analysis to see if there was any, anything that came out of those, those storm transpositions in the study that shows that maybe we should change our operating procedures, or something regarding the lakes. But the lakes outside of Lake Waco going into surcharge operations on those transposed storms, which, that didn't surprise us in the bit, that's, those are well above what the design storms are for the lakes. We didn't, we didn't see any reason to recommend any changes to the lake operations. And, so we presented this data to the city and to the county, and they utilized that going forward for the more detailed hydraulic study. Next slide. And you can see people in here that, you know, Walker Partners, Freezing Nichols, HDR, you know, we got a lot of data from a lot of different people, and a lot of feedback and from the city and from the county. So with that, I will turn it over to Freezing Nichols to present their piece. Thank y'all.
Well, thank you, Brett. And Brett just showed us the Corps of Engineers' new stormwater flow rates for the Brazos River, where they use modern statistical analyses for the 100-year storm. And he also showed us that these new flow rates are not only based on new technology, but also on the actual location of Lake Aquila and Lake Aquila's dam, since it was not built in the original location that it was planned. Then Brett showed us that a storm event larger than 100-year can happen, and did happen, just down the road in nearby Dawson, Texas. So now Blaine Letchwin with Freezing Nichols is going to present the new updated 100-year flood plane of the Brazos River, based on these new stormwater flow rates. And in addition to utilizing the Corps' new stormwater flow rates that Brett just presented to us for the 100-year event, our team also performed actual field surveys of the Brazos River, combined with new accurate LiDAR topographic information in the overbanks of the Brazos, which includes East Waco, in order to calculate a more accurate flood plane. And as I said in the beginning, the previous flood studies for the Brazos River, the studies in 1975 and in 1986, were based on 1960s-era aerial topographic maps. So with that, Blaine, you have the floor.
Thank you, Jed. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright. So as Jed, Brett, Brett both mentioned, the FEMA models that represent the FIS, the flood insurance study, and your 100-year flood elevations were based on the mid-'80s analysis. And so, with, with that said, I know there's been some updates to the firm panels and recent FEMA updates within the maps, but they do not take into account any new data, no new topography, no new H&amp;H modeling. And all of that is based on the old studies, and doesn't update any of that. It doesn't take into account any growth technological advances or modeling software that's been used here lately. And so, when we, when we wanted to remap this and update it, we wanted to use something that was current, and so we waited for the course analysis to get those updated flows to use in our modeling for the FEMA updates for the 100-year flood plane. If you would please move to the next slide. So, if you look at the, the map here, it kinda shows the limits of where our study begin and end. The upstream end is about five miles upstream of confluence of the Boski and the Brazos. And that's your limits of your detailed flood plane modeling. And then the downstream is about a mile south of Highway 77. And through this area of the flood plane, it crosses several different jurisdictions and municipalities that include, of course, the City of Waco, Bellmead, Lacey Lakeview, and the county. With that, can we move to the next slide? So our project updates that we did to update the FEMA models were to include the Brazos Labyrinth Weir Dam updates, and then the development along the Brazos there, through Waco, through Baylor, the football stadium, track and field, the baseball facilities. And as part of that update, through the cross-section, through the modeling, we updated all, new topo, and with the help of Walker Partners, they surveyed all the bridges, and all those bridges were shot in, and the latest survey information was included in this model, along with the Corps' study that has updated flows. If you would please move to the next slide. So what does that mean with the new flows? And Brett showed this same figure, you know, and you can see the mid-'80s study, you're down in the 80,000 CFS cubic feet per second, and then their flows jump up 20,000 throughout the city limits, right in that area. If you move to the next slide. So what does that result in, from our effective model to our proposed? So what does that result in from our effective model to our proposed? And the increases that we saw in our modeling is a maximum of about 3.2 feet in water surface elevation. And this result is strictly from the increase in flows. If you can see the map there, you can see our proposed 100-year and 500-year. The 100-year is represented in blue, and the orange represents the 500-year. The kind of greenish is your effect, is your downstream limits of, that's Zone A, which is not a detailed study. And your AE is along your other trits, that kind of purplish. If you'll advance the slide. And this is just a depiction of the model that shows, okay, here's our effective water surface elevation, which is that lower line that's fully colored in blue. And then the line above it is, that has the triangles, and that's the proposed increases in your water surface elevation. And you can see the different kind of landmarks that show, down at the Brazos Dam, we're about a foot and some change, and then back up by the suspension bridge, we're about three, around three feet increase in water surface elevation. And you'll advance the next slide, please. And what you're seeing here is the proposed increase. The blue represents what's effective now in your firm panels and your flood insurance rate maps. And the purple, pinkish, is the change that we're proposing with this, with the change in the floodplain and the flows.
Okay, thank you, Blaine. So if I were sitting in your old shoes, I would, or sitting in your old chairs, I would think, okay, so what happens next? And to say what happens next is what's changed up through today that is making us need to do something and be proactive in moving forward. And Blaine just showed you that he and Freezing Nichols have prepared and completed an updated, modern computer model that is just nothing more than a tool, but it's a great tool used to calculate 100-year floodplain. And he did that using new actual field survey topographic information of the Brazos River, new LiDAR topographic survey information of the overbanks, and the new 100-year stormwater flow rates that the Corps just produced, and with the new Labyrinth Weir Dam that Waco has, and the Labyrinth Weir replaced the old previous Drumgate Dam, and also it includes the actual locations of Lake Aquila. So with that, there is a new floodplain calculated, and that's been submitted to FEMA for their review. And once they've had a chance to review it and approve the floodplain maps and the calculations and all the computations that go into it, then the city of Waco will be in a position to where they can adopt that floodplain, where you all can adopt that floodplain as the new flood insurance rate map for the Brazos River. And the consulting team, in collaboration with the city staff, is currently preparing updates to the city's stormwater policy, the old design criteria, along with recommendations for updates to the flood protection ordinance. So with that, we are open to any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Walker or any of the other presenters?
This is Holmes. I just, thanks for this information, man. It's striking, that one, the one slide with all the purple on there is kind of troubling, obviously. So Jed, give me the timeline then, is FEMA reviews this, and then what's their typical timeline for final approval of these maps and these suggestions?
Right. And so FEMA is not only, yeah, FEMA is not only reviewing the Brazos River, but all of the other major streams in Waco as well right now. And so we're projecting that's going to be three to four months before we get approval from them. And it's been a long, arduous process. We were hoping to have that approval before the end of the year of 2020, and it still hasn't happened. But we're getting there. We're getting there one step at a time, but we are getting there, and we are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And then with regards to the new criteria and regulations for your stormwater policy, your drainage design criteria, and your updates to your flood protection ordinance, we are very, very close, I want to say we, not only the consulting team, but in collaboration with the city staff, we're very close to being able to have that come before you again. And we're shooting for July 6th to be able to do that.
So we'll have the other, I know Waco Creek was also one that we were concerned about. So we'll see the information on that one also?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is there, like on that slide where you're just kind of focusing in on, I'll call it downtown, is there a bigger map, or is this, this is the worst-hit portion, that's why you focused on that? Or is there something further upstream also?
Yeah, that, no, that's the biggest hit. It was the most significant and the greatest impact. And so just for presentation purposes, we created that window to show it because we felt like that depicted the worst impacts from these new increased flow rates.
Yeah. Because obviously this has impact on development, I mean, loan availability, equity, and value, and all kinds of things. I'm trying to, going back to that very first, one of the first slides you showed was this pyramid of, I can't tell exactly, you have the top, Waco, McLean County, do policies and actions and decisions, with the bottom part being Core. What decisions do we have to make? I mean, is this what it is, or what?
That's my question.
Do we choose to ignore it? What choices do we have to make here? That's what I'm trying to figure out. At the top of the pyramid, we're supposed to make a decision.
Right. Yeah, hang on just a sec. And Brett, would you like to take the first stab at that, since you had prepared this particular slide?
Yeah, that's a, it's not really in, it's not necessarily decisions that you have to make, it's decisions that you can make based on the information that came out of the study, right? So you, so you say, we don't, we don't regulate floodplanes, we don't regulate flows, we don't, you know, we don't regulate any, you know, we're not the overseers of any kind of flood insurance, or any of that. All we do is, you know, we're a bunch of, we're a bunch of technical engineers that sit in our cubes and punch numbers, and you know, we just, we just take the data that's available, and we do the best that we can to inform, you know, to allow y'all to make informed decisions. So the decisions and policies, actions, policies and actions piece up there, that's just in that pyramid of how you start off at the bottom, you do the analysis, you know, then you can change your policies, and you can take actions, and you can make informed decisions. That's really all that pyramid is. It's just a, it's, well, it's called a, it's called a decision pyramid, but as far as decisions that you have to make, obviously, you know, I mean, I don't want to step on Mr. Walker's toes or anybody else's, but you know, this has been submitted to FEMA for a letter of map revision, so they're reviewing the flows and reviewing the new elevation, so there's, I mean, there are going to have to be decisions that are going to have to be made because those increased elevations are going to impact, you know, citizens and homeowners and business owners. So, you know, they might have been out of the regulatory floodplain to begin with, and now they're going to be shown to be in it. And there's going to be decisions that have to be made on, you know, how you go forward, you know, and I think that's what Mr. Walker was alluding to, is that, you know, that's already in the works with the city staff to start looking at, you know, what's your free, you know, what's your free board requirement? What are you going to do for new development? What are you going to do for existing buildings that are being redeveloped? You know, that's all stuff that, those are decisions that have to be made. But, you know, hopefully what we've given you is enough analysis and enough background to make those informed decisions.
I guess I'm still unclear, is what decision are we supposed to make? Is decision made for us?
Well, and so first of all, thanks, everybody, for, on this call, for this information. I don't like this news, but I think it's important that we have it. And it's important that our citizens are informed of the risks that they might have, as painful as it is for me to hear it. And to echo what Holmes, I wrote the same thing down on the decision pyramid, is what are the decisions we have to make now? And also, the map question too, I think it's going to be important that this council see the complete map of changes. So I'd like to be informed of, you know, totally where, you know, I know that there's other parts of the city that are currently in the floodplain that will be taken out of the floodplain, and that are currently not in the floodplain, that will be in the floodplain now. And I think, you know, my charge to staff is twofold. One is, I think it's going to be really important for me to understand what the impact is to being now in the floodplain. Two, if you own a house, do you have to buy flood insurance now? Is your lender going to require you to have flood insurance? What is the cost of flood insurance? What is the financial impact going to be to families? Development, what are the development requirements going to be, and what is the impact going to be to develop? And what is the city's role, and other governmental entities' role in this? Because as has been mentioned, I've only seen one slide, and one, or one portion of an impacted area, and I guess if this is, I think Jed described this as the most impacted area, but assuming there's other areas available for development as well, this council's call is obviously to revitalize a part of our city in the Core, and this could have impact on that. And so I'm very curious as to what specifically that impact is. And then, just as importantly, what are the roles and opportunities for us to mitigate negative impact? And I want us to dream big on what those mitigation efforts are. Not only have a holistic approach to it, you know, my question is, what can be done to change this flood map through infrastructure up or downstream? What can be done to ensure that development in the core of our city is not inhibited because of this new modeling? Now, again, I value an informed citizenry who knows the risks of flood through great, you know, new technology, but I also don't want to lose the momentum that we're having in this community because of regulations that would prohibit or chill development. And so I'm really looking forward to a continued conversation around what it means for us to ensure that revitalization and development of this, these neighborhoods and others that are going to be impacted can be fully addressed.
Mayor, may I add a question? And Jed and Brett, please, if I misheard this completely, fix it. I think Brett said Whitney has huge flood storage capacity. And so I'm curious as to, you know, are there ways, as Mayor mentioned earlier, that up or downstream, there are alternatives to the mitigating this crisis for us? I mean, is there any way that anyone else could help us bear this burden, not necessarily just from our citizens and within our border walls of the Brazos? So did I mishear that, or am I not understanding properly?
No, you did not mishear that. And Brett, why don't you answer that, please, sir?
Well, yeah, whenever I say Whitney has a huge amount of flood storage capacity, I mean, it's a big lake. Been up there, it's a big lake. But you've also got to look at, it's upstream drainage basin. I mean, aside from Possum Kingdom, which has no flood storage, and then Granberry, which is downstream of that, which has no flood storage, anytime those rainfall events happen above them, and they, their elevations come up, the Brazos River Authority releases that floodwater. That floodwater has to go somewhere. It comes to Whitney. Whitney's the kind of the stopping point until we can make controlled releases. So if you go back on the slide, that's where I show the three, the three lakes, and what they're regulated versus unregulated is. I don't recall right offhand what the drainage basin is, or what the drainage area is for Whitney itself, but right there. Yeah, so Whitney, so Whitney has 17,000, over 17,000 square miles of drainage basin that it has to, has to basically absorb that flood, that flood flow. You know, compared to Waco that's got 1,600, and Aquila that's got 252 square miles. So as you can see, at 17,000, that's huge. I mean, think about, like I said, there's that one chart that showed the historical annual peaks that have happened in the Brazos, you know, and there, you know, there was peaks up there that, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if y'all have seen pictures of downtown Fort Worth before the floodway was ever built, but you see that peak there in about 1938, that was almost 250,000 cubic feet per second? You know, I couldn't, I couldn't even begin to think what that elevation would be with that, but, you know, kind of a similar event before flood, before flood control structures were being built with the city of Fort Worth, and you see, you know, the, it was up, up to the second floor of the buildings in downtown Fort Worth, whenever the Trinity got up, or the Clearfork, the Trinity got up. So the ways to mitigate it, you know, that's, you know, I don't, I don't make those decisions, unfortunately. Y'all kind of, y'all kind of, I provide the data, and I'll, you know, we can assist and try to come up with ideas. You're not really going to get, I mean, you can't gain any more flood storage out of Whitney, it is what it is. You know, we're seeing more, our rain events are being, especially right now, they're being a lot, a lot heavier, heavier downpour, you know, we're not, our rain events are a lot different than what they have been over the last 60, 70 years. You know, but you've always, you've always got to look to the future. So, I mean, I spent 10 years in private sector, and we never wanted to see flows go up because that impacts whatever you're trying to do, you know, whether it be development, you know, or the phone's ringing now because, you know, like was mentioned earlier, you know, mortgage companies now requiring you to get flood insurance, you know, and it's going to cost you $500 or $1,000 or $2,000 a year, depending on what, what the depth is. But to say that flows aren't ever going to go up, that's not even possible, you know, I mean, we can't, the only way that's possible is, okay, we're not going to, we're not going to grow anymore, and as, you know, it's human nature, we want to grow, we want, you know, that's just what's going to happen. So changes in land use, you know, the more concrete that goes on the ground, the more runoff you're going to get. You know, there's a lot of, lot of ways to mitigate that stuff. You know, it's, it got, it didn't, it didn't get mentioned much, and Waco didn't get affected by it too much, but there's something called Atlas 14 out there. It's put out, excuse me, it's put out by the National Weather Service. And what it is, is that's the rainfall depths that we use when we do these studies. And all the states, except for like three of them in the United States, have been updated. But Texas is so huge, and it has like five different climates, right? So you've got, you know, you've got the desert out west, you've got the northern plains, kind of dry, arid climate, you know, then you've got the central Texas, and then you've got the piney woods. So it took a lot, big effort to finally get Atlas 14 updated. Waco kind of dodged the bullet. Central Texas didn't really, didn't really get impacted by it, but a lot of Texas, especially if you get down like the Guadalupi Basin, for instance. The 100-year precipitation, the design precipitation that we use for the 24-hour 100-year, went from, say, 11 inches to about 15 inches. That just change in precipitation alone that you use as the basis for the modeling, that by itself, you know, created, you know, 20 to 30% increase in runoff, you know, not, not, and that's, that's not including development. So Waco kind of dodged the bullet. It didn't really change for the Waco area. Now, if, say that Dawson Storm would have moved, then, you know, that more than likely the rainfall depths for Waco, you know, they could have gone up, and that, you know, the results of this study could have been even higher than that. But like I said, it's not, you've got to look at... But like I said, it's not, you've got to look at, you got to, to me, you got to look at the really, really big picture. If you want to grow and you want to do all that and you've got to make changes or you've got to make decisions that are going to mitigate the impact of that, right? Obviously, this study's going to impact that, but, you know, how you bounce back or how you, how you react to it, you know, that's up to, that's, that's kind of where the ordinances and the policies come into play. And then like, you know, on that decision tree, like I was mentioning, you know, you got to, you got to look forward as well because this isn't, you know, you go 20, 30 years, you know, say 30 years from now and you want to, you know, and you update these flows again, you know, there's, there's a likelihood that they could go up even more. As far as the lakes, there's not really any changes you can do to the lakes. Because any, any changes in release to the lakes to say, you know, can we release more water to try to mitigate, you know, ahead of time? Well, we've got, by releasing more water, you're still going to be impacting Waco because you are downstream of the lakes. So, you know, it's a, it's a system. They operate as a system. All three of those lakes operate as a system to kind of protect Waco. You know, but it's a...
I think, I appreciate it. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, no problem. I'd say I don't, I don't have all the answers. It's very complex and, I mean, I understand the frustration that, you know, and kind of, I'm sure y'all's heads are spinning. It's something that I'm pretty used to seeing anytime we present these kind of studies and results. But y'all aren't alone in it, I can guarantee you that.
I, I think what's going to be helpful for, for me and I would suspect this council is to examine, like I, like I mentioned, opportunities for us to try to mitigate the, or reduce, or mitigate flooding thereby reducing this flood map if at all possible. I think it's going to be helpful for me and this council to also develop strategies around how we're going to communicate with residents and developers on the impact of this and, and really think through strategically, not only the communication piece of it, but what we're going to do to try to ensure that this doesn't chill quality of life, financial security and development in the core of our city.
Mayor, we appreciate those comments and honestly, I appreciate Brett and Blaine and Jed and the team joining us online today. I know when I started out with the intro, said we want to talk about the how and the, and the why, the data behind it. And then we'll come back and on July 6th and talk about regulatory options and, and we'll certainly add the, the comments from the council to our list of things to address. Now, we won't be able to figure out how to build a reservoir upstream by July 6th or those dream big ideas that you're talking about, but we can certainly start to evaluate and have a more informed discussion about regulatory approach by then. So appreciate y'all's patience on that. And again, appreciate the team that's joined us online this afternoon as well.
City Manager Ford, how much of a say-so does this council or the constituents or community that is impacted by the proposed floodplain have? How much of a say-so?
I mean, we can't change the data. We can't change the water that's coming. We can't change gravity, can't change that reality. What we do have impact on is, is development regulations. And one of the balances we have to keep in mind is our involvement in the National Flood Insurance Program. And we get rated on that in our CRM program on a regular basis. If we don't make thoughtful decisions based on the data we've been presented with, it can, it can have a very negative impact on our residents. So what I'd say is let us, let us kind of package that up, come back to you on the 6th and talk to you about, and have a more informed discussion about what options do you have to make policy decisions that are, that are based on sound data as well as our, our priorities to continue to develop in the core of Waco. We appreciate, appreciate everybody's time on that one. I'm going to go ahead and call the next work session. It'll be a, a follow-up discussion on, sorry, I'm having a little problem here, on our airport renovation. As Marlon Field start adding folks to the call, it's Work Session 2021-280, which is Discussion of Waco Regional Airport Terminal Building Modernization. We've actually come to the council a couple of times now with a work session and an informal report, most recently in March. Today, we're joined by Joel Martinez, our Director of Aviation, as well as Fiona Bond and the team from KACO Architecture, who's been drawing the plans for our airport renovation. Today's presentation is hopefully going to show that we've been listening to the feedback that you've been providing us to bring in culture and art into this project. And I look forward to seeing the team's presentation now. Joel?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. It is, I'd like to introduce our project team from KACO Architecture. We have Miriam Camargo, Roberto Diaz, and we have Edgar Morales and Maggie Darver are also on the call. They're, they've been a big part of what we've put forward. We've done a couple of presentations and taken some comments from City Manager's Office and from Fiona and Carla to represent some of our cultural and our arts, our arts community. And so I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I'd like to, I'd like to thank our team and our, and our staff for that. But I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Miriam to go ahead and start our presentation.
Thank you, Joel. I appreciate that. So we are very pleased to present our design for the terminal renovation this afternoon. We have, I think we need to get our video started, our presentation started. So, the next slide pretty much identifies some of the goals that we set out for our starts as we began the renovation project. And it encompasses Waco as a creative and innovative city while reinforcing its place as a regional gateway. We believe that's really very important. So, our presentation as well as our approach has been a layered approach. The first layer really is the architectural design within the confines of the existing building footprint and building outgrowth. And of course, this has to do with modernizing the facility and setting the stage for the second layer, which is the art and culture overlay, allowing us to make this tunnel uniquely Waco's. That is really the biggest part. So presenting this design is Roberto Diaz, who is an associate principal and the project manager for the project. Roberto?
Good afternoon, Roberto Diaz with KACO Architecture. What you're seeing right now is the existing building spatial analysis that, that we went through at the beginning of the project, identifying the areas that we're going to be doing work on as you come in through the ticketing for the facility, as you move on through the security checkpoint into the terminal, and as you arrive to Waco, as you come out of that secured area and back into the main circulation hallway. There's a food and beverage component right now that is not being utilized. There's additional vending machine as you make your way to the luggage claim. And then you're flagged by restrooms and the car rental desks that are currently existing. What you see in green right now are the areas that we're affecting with this project, mainly finishes throughout floors, walls and ceilings, although we are adding some additional architectural items and enhancements to help modernize the facility. If you go to the next slide, please. As you can see here, this is the proposed improvements. Again, the majority of the floor plan stays the same. We are cleaning up a lot of the finishes, modernizing the finishes as you come into ticketing, providing a more modern look that we'll look at in a little bit, creating a more open entry portal into the security checkpoint, taking advantage of the double, height volumes that are available in this phase as you work yourself into your way into the terminal. We're actually separating into two distinct, a waiting lounge to either side of the gates that are currently operating and providing some opportunities down the middle for some lounge seating and, you know, charging stations for laptops and telephones. As you come out of the secure area, what we call in the welcome lane, you're going through exit device, devices that allow one-way traffic out into the land, land side of the terminal. And then we're repurposing the food service component into a waiting lounge and kids area for people to, to wait for passengers coming out of those lines. Then as you move to luggage claim, that area again is updated with finishes. And then we are also updating the gang restrooms that are currently existing to bring them up to a more current spatial standard for airports, larger stalls, larger corridors through them to allow for easier movement with luggage and kids, and also creating a universal restroom that is currently not available to the clientele there. If you go to the next slide, please. Through the development here, we've generated two different flooring concepts, the original concept that you're seeing here, and then an additional concept that came about through some input that we got last week from one of our meetings with the airport. Generally speaking, what we've taken here is the concept that Waco is the heart of Texas, so highlighting the location of Waco in the heart of the airport, in highlighting surrounding cities as they relay in the latitude and longitude, if you're going to plot these points out in a kind of a map of Texas overlay, and then generating a flooring pattern around that concept. What you're seeing in this pattern, it kind of alludes back to the Cartesian model, I guess, of the latitudes and longitudes, creating kind of a plant effect that goes with the rectilinear kind of nature of the facility. If you go to the next slide. Through our discussions, we've generated a second option, which really kind of cleans up that heavy grid that you were seeing, makes it more of a monolithic design to, to the flooring. But again, we're highlighting the same concept of Waco being the heart of Texas and then highlighting the terrazzo with some accent lines that essentially ripple out from Waco, kind of reminiscent of perhaps a radar image or ripples in water. Kind of a cleaner flooring concept there. As we move through, you see the proposed materials that you're seeing here, airside terminal carpet for the seating areas to provide a little bit quieter area while you're waiting for flights, a children's area carpet that's more playful and designed. And then behind the car rental and actually the ticketing area, providing a vinyl tile that has cushion to it to ease strain on people working those counters. And then for the majority of the facility, using epoxy terrazzo, Corning plays epoxy terrazzo throughout the facility. In concept A, using both the terrazzo field and accent colors that you see here. And then option B, utilizing just a more monolithic terrazzo field. Both of these would be accented with different, what we call terrazzo strips of different widths to create the pattern that was indicated previously. If you go to the next slide. Again, with those flooring concepts too, there are generated two different ceiling concepts. So imagine if you're looking up to the ceiling, this is what you see. For concept A, really reinforcing the rectilinear nature of the facility through the use of gypsum or what is called acoustibelt ceilings, which are hard ceilings that have acoustical value to help kind of mitigate the noise that's generated by all the hard surfaces. We're also showing two-by-two ceiling tiles, which are more commodity for, for kind of the back of the counter areas. As you walk into the security area, where you have that double, double volume space, we're proposing to, excuse me, open up that ceiling into one volume that is currently divided into two and really make it feel a lot grander than, than what it currently is. And we're accenting that with a wood slat ceiling product that we'll see here shortly. As you walk into the terminal, again, we follow the rectilinear design with more linear lights. And then we go into the waiting areas with a, with a high two-by-six oversized acoustical tile that lends itself for the bigger volume of space and still generating kind of a lounge area there for charging stations and different seating options that you'll see shortly. As you make your way out of the secured area, passing through the lounge, we're highlighting, you know, you have the kids area with the same ceiling treatments through there. And then as you go into the luggage claim areas, you've got another wood slat ceiling that greets you if you come through the other set of openings. And then a, you know, maximizing the height of that volume there at luggage claim and gives it the opportunity to create an art display that we'll get into a little bit later, but it's that gridded pattern that you're seeing here in the plan. In the, in the restrooms, again, cleaning up the ceilings, providing more of a hard ceiling look, very streamlined and clean look to it. If you go to the next concept. Concept B, being a reaction to, to the other concept, flooring concept, taking the opportunity to kind of break that rectilinear and kind of bring both the, the rectilinear nature of the, of the facility and providing some movement with the addition of these curves that are reminiscent to what's, what we're proposing on the flooring. Gives us the opportunity to kind of break up the ceiling a little bit and provide some additional accent lighting throughout the, the existing ceilings or the new proposed ceilings. Generally speaking, you know, the, what you see in the background kind of remains the same, but we are adding these elements to reflect what's happening on the floor and really provide some additional movement and interest to the ceilings that are being proposed. If you go to the next slide. And here are some views of the, the look of the proposed ceilings. You can see the wood slab product that's being proposed, the either painted gypsum or acoustibelt ceiling, really it just looks like a typical gypsum ceiling, the larger scale two-by-six ceiling tiles, and then the two-by-two acoustical ceiling tiles that are very typical to office spaces and whatnot. You go to the next. This indicates the overall material finish board that we've generated. The, you have the carpets on the left with the first three being kind of a blend for the children's area, then the fourth one in the middle with the yellow accent becomes kind of the seating area carpets, and then examples of the vinyl tile, the cushion vinyl tile, and then walk-off mats as you go through the rest of those. And then you'll notice that the palette that we've generated is fairly monochromatic on the walls, but we're accenting that with the warm wood tones that you see here to bring a little bit of warmth to the facility. And then you see as well the terrazzo strips and the terrazzo patterns here. To go to the next slide. So here we're seeing some renderings of the facility as it's been designed. The renderings right now indicate the flooring option A, so that's what you'll see on the floor, but this has actually come into the facility and you're greeted by the American Airlines ticket counters, kind of reimagining the ceilings through here, accenting the grid that is created by the columns and creating, again, dedicated seating areas and perhaps a charging station with accent lighting as you walk into the terminal and you're catching a view of the security portal that's being created in that main area. If you go to the next. Here's a view of the security portal as you're essentially queuing in to go through security. You see the higher volume that's now all, one volume, one space to help accentuate that area. And then you see the indication of that swirling pattern that's perhaps one of the art pieces that we'll be discussing here a little bit later. But again, kind of cleaning, cleaning up and opening up the facility to make it feel a lot... But again, kind of cleaning up and opening up the facility to make it feel a lot lighter than it feels right now. If you go to the next. This is a view kind of looking down the welcome hallway, if you may, and you can see on the glass that separates kind of the secured entrance to the exit, the indication of a printed film. Again, that's another one of the opportunities that we'll be discussing for the art component of the facility. If you go to next. Looking at the terminal portion of the facility, they're looking from the American Airlines gate that is existing, and you can see the wood of the slat, wood slats to help warm up the facility itself. And then the lounge area in the middle that's created there with kind of hiding the vending back behind it and counters right there for charging stations or lap views. On the wood slats that you see there, if you'll notice, there's the appearance of some topographic information that's being carved into that wood as part of the architectural treatment. The idea being that we're showing the topography of Lake Waco in the wood there, and that'll travel through above the transom. If you go to the next slide, please. And kind of across the facility down to the other side, where we'd be showing the topography of the confluence and the parks in that area carved in the wood. Again, as you see through here on the other side, you're seeing the sign is going back out to baggage claim, and just a different view of the lounge area separating the two waiting lounges, if you may, at either gate. If you go to the next slide. And then this is a view from the luggage claim area, looking out to the doors. You can see the LED light display that's being created as an art component for the facility, and then the updated car rental desk as well as the new location for vending kind of across the way so that when you come into the facility, you're not greeted by that vending, but actually you'll be greeted by more informational type displays for the facility. If you go to next. And then this is a view of the proposed restroom, really cleaning up all the finishes, forsakes kind of a streamlined look and cleanliness, bringing the terrazzo product up to a Wainscot height where it's met by the textured tile that you see here. And then we're also proposing full-size partitions that are a more modern class product that is being currently utilized in several other airports, that provides a lot more privacy, kind of a completely contained stall, if you may, instead of having views through all the corners. If you go to the next.
I think we would like to, oh, here we go. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay, so now that we have set the stage, we move to the second layer that we mentioned, and that is the art and cultural overlay. Through this overlay, we are going to be creating the emblematic look of Waco, its culture and equity, and also in collaboration with Creative Waco, I believe that you all know Fiona Bond, and Carla Tendra, with the Visitor and Convention Bureau, as well as with Gail Price's input, and Hoel's. We all have collaborated to come up with this art program. So I'd like to very quickly go through this and share with you some of the locations that we have identified. And as I mentioned, it is a layered approach to our design solution. So the first opportunity that we see for art is the security checkpoint, Roberta mentioned in intimated, and also in our rendering, so we saw the opportunity to create a sculpture. And I think that Fiona may have a couple of ideas in mind, and in general, she will describe the concept behind that in just a moment. The second location, Roberta already has described, the locations A and B being part of the architectural network expressed through a sculptural element that is incorporated into the construction for the project. And then when you see the C, it is an opportunity for us to really have a commissioned piece of art that will really be very unique to Waco. We're very excited about it, and we'll describe that in just a moment. The welcome lane, which is number three over here, is something that Roberta, and you already saw in the renderings, a little bit of an allusion to something special that may happen there, we'll go into that in a moment. And then the welcome to Waco backdrop with item number four, sort of cleans up the current contours of the main terminal or the land height of the terminal, and I think it will create some excitement in terms of being able to really highlight and again, continue to create that uniqueness to Waco. Waco is a lot more than what we think it is at first glance. In the children's play area, there is an opportunity to create a children's interactive display that may look at various modes of air travel, and more about that in just a moment. Hoel, I think, will be able to share with us a couple of things in that regard. And you have already seen for item number six, a glimpse of what we're thinking in terms of an LED or a light canopy. So with that, let's go on to the next slide. And this is the security checkpoint, which becomes a focal point, and this is where we really want to have that aha moment, we're in Waco. So Fiona, if you would please help us with this.
Better unmute myself there. Hi, thanks so much for inviting me to be part of this conversation. This particular piece that is depicted is, it's just an example of the kind of scale and budget and approach that could be achieved for this particular space. So this is not per se an actual proposal, although it is a proposal that comes from a local artist. This is a piece called Scissor Tales, which is by Bryant Stanton. He's a local architectural stained glass and steel and wood artist. And this particular piece is based on the idea of migration, and it's, it is an, what I call aluminium, but I should probably call aluminum, sculpture which is based on the flight patterns of birds that migrate through this part of the world, but that also follow a lot of the patterns that the airline routes that crisscross over Waco follow. And this particular piece has, each of those little birds has faceted glass crystals embedded into various points on their bodies, so that as the sun moves around the space during the day, there's a lot of natural light that comes into that space. And as the sun catches each of the birds, that it casts a series of rainbows that change as the light changes through the day. And as I say, this is not, this is not, I'm not saying this should be the piece that goes in that space, but for the kind of budget level and scale and scope and impact that we're looking at for a space, that double height space of those proportions, this is a realistic approach, which would capture something about, something kind of universal, but also something distinctive to this area.
Thank you. I believe that the height there is about 17 feet from the level of the floor to the underside of the wood lighted ceiling. So the second location, I think we've already talked a little bit about, the architectural sculptural elements, which will be highlighted both in areas A and B. As Roberta mentioned earlier, it is a topographical representation of Lake Waco. And then on the other side of B, it would be a representation of the confluence of the Brazos and the Botswana River. In location C, we believe we have a very unique opportunity to really make this stand out as uniquely Waco, which is the Mammoth National Monument Park, and being able to recreate a full-size scale Colombian mammoth and possibly its path to allow people to have an opportunity to experience what they might be able to experience at the dig, also having an opportunity to promote the park itself, and great interest in coming back to find the hidden treasures that Waco has to offer. And then what we're showing here in terms of the budget is what would be the commission piece for area C.
Hey, Miriam and Fiona and the team, we've got about 10 minutes here, we need to wrap up.
Okay, we'll speed it up then. Number three, this is the welcome lane, and the intent here is to be able to create something that is colorful and very welcoming, has an opportunity to get a lot of community input. One of the ideas that was brought forth, maybe spelling welcome in the several languages that are represented by Waco's community, and incorporating it into a wrap that would be applied to the glass that is incorporated as part of the architectural element. And again, it provides an opportunity for that wrap to be changed on a seasonal or biannual basis, whatever it's decided upon, and it's a cost-effective way of blocking some of the, you know, glare that comes about in the late afternoon, and also kind of the spike used to be outside of the more operational area of the airport. So the next one is the, a proposal for the welcome to Waco backdrop. Currently, the area that is being blue, there is an existing case that houses some artworks that is somewhat static and kind of, you know, it takes back to probably the 1980s. But the idea here is to propose a means to represent Waco, whether it's a metal cutout that has some of the more iconic locations for Waco, such as the Magnolia Studios, the Alaco Building, you know, some of the other very highly recognizable locations would be good here. And that would be a cutout made out of metal. Or option B, it would be a recognizable, very artistic interpretation of Waco as a logo, and that's the middle image that you see. So one means would be to do the metal cutout, the other means would be to continue with the concept of a wrap, which could be consolidated and, you know, created through the center for that, the welcome piece would be in the welcoming. So moving on to the children's area, there is a great opportunity here to create an interactive display that would be commissioned. Again, this might be a way to show, or yes, to illustrate various modes of transportation, which is one of the hallmarks of Waco itself, and looking at air travel. So again, this would be an attraction for the airport. And last but not least, the opportunity to, through the LED light canopy, create a curated digital display that could become interactive if wanted, and by being curated, it could be changing on a seasonal basis, quarterly basis, whatever is decided, or whatever is needed in possibly highlighting some of the events for our culture that take place in Waco. As you can see, the first image in the center is an example of just an LED light, nothing interactive display, that would be sort of an art installation, and then the second one would become, you know, a bit more visual, it could be animated, it could be interactive, irrespective of what is happening, both in the city or directly underneath that canopy. So those are really the means that we feel we can incorporate art, you know, elevate the quality of the space, and make this airport terminal memorable and uniquely Waco. So that is the end of the second layer that we discussed. And then in general, looking at the schedule, today is the 18th, and so we are making our design development presentation. These bars are somewhat, you know, representative of the timeframes, although we need to probably develop them a little bit further and solidify them, but we will go into the construction documents here to be able to have drawings that are necessary for permitting and for borrowing bids of general contractors to actually carry out the renovation work. And then we are really kind of positioning ourselves to be able to begin the work in October of 2021, with a tentative completion date of March 2022. We suspect, and again, so we have an opportunity to discuss with the general contractor who will be carrying the work, within 14 to 16 weeks for construction, this will need to be a phased kind of a project delivery, and so that always yet to be determined, but just to give you a general overview of what we are looking at in terms of planning. Additionally, and I know I'm almost out of time, but I would like to share with you the budget. We have had a cost estimator as one of our consultants in our team. They've done both a schematic design and now design development estimate, so that we are looking at a total cost of construction come on $2.2 million. The initial budget we had was $1.3 million. We have added quite a bit to the project in terms of scope. So, you know, all along we've been looking at the numbers and taking advantage of some of the funding that is available, have really kind of pushed the design envelope. Additionally, there's a fixtures, furnishings, and equipment line item, which is about $258,000. We had an allowance of about $300,000, so I think we're pretty much on target on that one. And then the art and culture program, which Fiona has been able to facilitate for us some of the costs, and we are looking at an allowance of somewhere around $10 million. So the project, the total project costs are about $3.067 million. And then Hoel has identified the funding sources, just so that you have a really good idea of where the different dollars are coming from. And with that, I will turn it over to Hoel to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Miriam.
Of course.
For the next slide, and if there are any questions or comments, this is an opportunity for council to convey any direction that we may have, or questions about the budget or anything else.
Thanks, Hoel, and I do know that we're kind of bumping up on our, a lot of time here, and we could all talk about this for a long time because this is so exciting, and do want to just commend, commend you, Hoel, and your team for this. But so if there are any comments that we want to say now, please do so, and then certainly, council, feel free to follow up with city management's office if there's some more in-depth feedback that you'd like to give at a later date.
Will there be a time for us to discuss this more in-depth as a group, or mayor, is the best way to have the conversations like one-on-one with city manager, and then he can kind of bring back ideas to us as a collective?
That'd be my preference.
Okay, great.
And we can distribute the slides out to the council as well, so you can kind of spend some more time with them as well.
Perfect.
Great. Well, let's plan on doing that, council, if there aren't any real pressing issues right now, but do want to commend staff, this is really exciting to see the modernization and updates that are coming together, and I'm sure that our council will get back to staff on some, with some feedback or any suggestions that they might have as we move forward, but believe that this is an incredibly positive step, so appreciate everyone's efforts to date. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
All right, mayor, that concludes the work sessions I have for you. I think all that's left is a call for future gen items.
Yep. Are there any requests for future gen items? I have one. I think it would be really helpful for me to have a discussion on smart greenfield development, both commercial and residential. And And I just think that for my own personal edification, that'd be helpful for this, to be schooled up on that, but then also have an opportunity for this council to engage in the discussion of what we want and how do we make sure that we're, the new developments that are coming online are developments that are going to be built to last for the long haul. So I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Resi, you're talking about resi?
Residential primarily is what comes to mind, but I think like just as we develop out that green, our greenfield, commercial and residential, you know, what are good practices? What do we need to have an eye for? How do we encourage the growth, but also make sure that we have the proper regulations in place to make sure we're approving plaits and developing developments that are built to last for the long haul? Anything else? Great. All right, we will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:53.
Members is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071. A, Jose Gonzalez versus Timothy Barrett and Juan Avila, Civil Action Number 620-CB-00782, pending in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas, Waco Division. B, Alfred Chambers versus City of Waco, Cause Number 2020-3217-5, pending in the 414th District Court, McLean County, Texas. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072. Three, economic development, Texas Open Meeting Act, section 551.087. And four, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.074, City Secretary Esmeralda Hudson. We are now in executive session at 4:54 PM.